Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. We do have overflow seating, excuse me, upstairs in room 2027. So for those of you who do not have a seat, we do have overflow seating. You will be able to see everything that's going on, so you will not miss anything. So you would take the elevators upstairs to the second floor, go across the breezeway, and it's the first room on your right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning. This is the county council of Prince George's County. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Okay, well, please turn up my mic. Please turn up the mic. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Present.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Present, sorry. Ms. Blagay.
Present.
Mr. Denoga.
Present.
Ms. Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Harrison.
Good morning, Madam Clerk. Present.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, present, am I?
Mr. Olson.
Here.
Vice Chair Orietta.
Ms. Watson.
Present.
Chair members, present at roll call. And Mr. Chair, Councilmember Ivy has an excused absence. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Councilmember Ivy has an excused absence. Now, we'll have an invocation from Pastor Brian Bailey, pastor for the People Ministries in Bowie, Maryland. There are some special attentions. Councilmember Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if members of the audience could use hushed tones or not speak while the council's in session, we greatly appreciate that. Good morning, Pastor over here. How are you? Sorry, I know there's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, so I agree with you.
It's a, it's a, thank you for joining us this morning. I would actually like you to pray for a dear friend of many of us. Congressman Al Wynn lost his mother, and I spoke to him actually this morning, and her memorial's today. So if we could pray for former congressman of Prince George's County, Al Wynn, and his family, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County Executive is here. In the spirit of her elevation, we have-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Who just said that? Who just spoke? Did you just speak?
Yeah, I couldn't hear him.
Okay, cool. It was a voice I didn't recognize. Like, what happened to the sound system? If we can turn up the microphones?
I'll turn them on.
Can you turn up the mics? They can't hear. Testing, one, two, three, testing. Oh, you want to press the button?
Testing, testing. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, we have our county executive here, but also, we have three iconic figures, Mr. Chair, and colleagues sitting in this very chambers with us. We have Dr. Wilbert Wilson, who once led, was the highest-ranking black official in this county government, present. Dr. Wilson, would you stand, please? Ladies and gentlemen? And Madam County Executive, Mr. Chair, I did see Major Riddick here, but doesn't seem like he's still present. Another iconic figure, who was the first chief administrative officer of African-American descent to serve, and was the only one, for a long time, the chief of staff for governor in the state of Maryland. I just wanted to give him his props. And lastly, Mr. Chair, we have the first elected black council member in Prince George's County here with his lovely wife, Doc Wilson Floyd Wilson. And lastly, my request is that we pray for the family of Mayor Vivian Dotson. I understand that she transitioned over the last few days, and to God be the glory for the life she served. And I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Harrison. And colleagues, if you've already raised your hand, I have you on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir, for joining us. I'm right here. How are you? Thank you, Pastor, for joining us. In your prayer this morning, I would like to pray for all of our federal workers, people that are impacted by the federal government, the citizens of this country that so heavily rely on the services of all these agencies that, how these agencies are being affected. And I also like to pray for all of the leadership in this county as we serve and elevate to move Prince George's County forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask for prayer for the Batista family. Here I am, right here.
I'm sorry.
Their family, the father of the family was taken away by ICE last week, and they live in District Four. So I ask for prayers for the family. And I would like to also ask for prayers for a very special friend of mine, whose name is Courtney Glass, and she's going through some challenges, health challenges, and I wanted to ask for special prayer for her. Thank you.
Did you say Glass?
Yes, Courtney Glass.
Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want us to please pray for the family and friends of Lisa Martin. She was killed by a hit-and-run on her bike on Soil Conservation Road. The US Park Police are investigating. I understand they have found the car, but she was much loved in our community. She was a strong leader in our community, and she will be missed greatly. I also, I lost my aunt just the other day, Bonnie Pomeranki, and she's the last of my dad's siblings. And it's something to lose a generation. So, thank you.
Councilmember Blagay?
Thank you. I would just like you all to keep my lines, our, my line in prayer. My line sister, Taryn Lewis Butler, passed away from pancreatic cancer on, last week. Just pray for the Prince George's County Alumni Chapter and Fort Washington Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, as many of us are heavily grieving the loss of someone so young to pancreatic cancer. And I want to echo sentiments of my colleagues about the federal workers, making sure that we continue to pray, because many of our federal workers are suffering in silence, and we want to make sure that they are supported.
Councilmember Adam Stafford?
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a special prayer for a family in my community where, unfortunately, this past weekend, a car crashed into a birthday party, and 11 people were injured, and one woman was killed. And so, we're just asking for prayers for this family, for all the children that were involved in this horrific accident.
Pastor, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay.
Please make sure his microphone's on.
Testing. Okay. Is it on? I'll speak up even if it's not. So let's all come together in prayer. So Eternal and Everlasting Father, we come to you this morning, giving you glory and honor, Lord God. Just a prayer of adoration of who you are, Lord God. If you do nothing else, Lord God, we are so grateful for what you've already done. Oh, God, you hear the hearts of your people, Lord God. You know the things that have not been shared, Lord God. You know the things that we are working with on our own, Lord God, and it cannot be done without you. Well, Lord God, we bring to your throne of grace the Al Wynn family, Lord God, and how they are processing in grief, Lord God. We know that your word teaches us that we don't grieve like those who have no hope, Father God, but I pray that you cover and strengthen them, Lord God. We thank you for the individuals who are here, who are identified as iconic, Lord God. We thank you that they're still committed, Lord God, to the work that you have for them to do. Father God, we pray for the family of Vivian Dotson, Lord, that this family is being able to be held by you, Lord, in this difficult time of grief, Lord God, that whatever they may be in need of, Father, that you cover and strengthen them, Lord. Lord God, you see what is happening in your world, Lord God, and we pray for every federal worker, Lord God. Everyone who is not working at the moment, who may not be paid, Lord God, who are struggling, who are worried, who are filled even with anxiety about all that they're experiencing, Lord God. We just pray that you have your way in their lives, Lord God. We pray for every individual here in Prince George's County and Maryland, Lord God, in this country, in the world, oh, God. There are so many worries, Lord, but we know that you have it all in your hand. So we just pray that you cover and strengthen, oh, God. Lord, we praying for the Batista family, that we praying that you cover and give them a comfort, Lord God, as they have experienced a difficult time with the father being taken away, Lord God. We praying for those things that are happening in not just District Four, Lord God, but in all the districts, Lord God, in your world, Father God. We pray that you have your way. Lord, we pray for Courtney Glass and health challenges, Lord God. We know that there are so many things going on, and that all doctors, hospitals, nurses, and all those people who are assigned, they're assigned to practice medicine, Lord God, but we know that you are the great healer, Lord. So we give it to you to have your way in the lives of those individuals that are struggling, Lord God. The family of Lisa Martin, who was killed by the hit-and-run driver, Lord God. Lord God, they are grieving right now in a way that many of us can't understand. So we just pray that you give them all that they need and give them the comfort, Lord God, and put those individuals around them, Father God, that are running to you, Lord God, prayer warriors, that give you the glory, Lord. Lord, we praying for the family of Aunt Bonnie Comranki, Lord God, to lose a member of the family, Lord God, who changed generational status, Lord. Lord, we ask you to cover that family and strengthen them along the way. Lord, for Terry Lewis Butler's family, Lord God, that sometimes it's the difficult times. Sometimes it's the grief, it's the loss, it's the hurt, it's the pain, it's the worry, oh, God, that bring us running to you. So, Lord God, I pray that every individual in this room today, under the sound of my voice and beyond, Lord God, we're praying for each and every individual, their personal life, Lord God, their physical health, their mental health, their emotional health, Lord God, beyond the titles, beyond the positions, beyond the roles, Lord God. We pray that you move in their lives as your children, Lord God. We praying for the line sisters, Lord God, of Delta Sigma Theta, Lord God, and the struggles that they are coming together even closely, closer, Father God, in their difficult situation. But, Lord, we know of the 11 individuals and the children, Lord God, that were struck down, Lord God, by a car, Father. Lord God, we praying for the parents, the families, the one who lost their life, Lord God. We praying for the fear and anxiety that are now on those children, the trauma that they've experienced, Lord God. So we praying that you make a way out of a way that we seem not to be able to even recognize, Lord, but we know that you have all power in your hand. So, God, have your way in this place, Lord God, that we are able to experience amazing processes and procedures, Lord God, that we operate with effectiveness and efficiency, Lord God, that you move in a mighty way that we can do nothing but give you the glory, and have a testimony of how great, how marvelous, and how wonderful you are. So we leave all these things at your throne of grace, waiting for you to return them, so that we can have even a greater testimony of what you have done again. So we give it to you. In Jesus' name we're praying, so be it. Amen?
Amen.
And amen.
Excuse me, Pastor, just one other prayer. I'm sorry. It was sitting right here in front of me. We, one of our council team members, Jackie, lost her nephew tragically on October the 4th. His name is Jerome J.D. Miles. If you can also say a special prayer for J.D. and Jackie and their entire family?
Yes. Let's go back to the throne of grace. Oh, God, you are good all the time. Oh, God, you are good all of the time, Lord God, even in the midst, Lord God, even in the difficult situations, Lord God. We bring our young brother Miles to your throne of grace, and we praying, Lord God, that he sits in your bosom. But in that time, Lord God, we're praying for Sister Jackie, Lord, that you cover that family in their time of grief, in their time of loss, Lord God, that you bring the people together in a way, Lord God, that those who do not honor you, we're praying for a hedge of protection to keep those people away, Lord God. And those who honor you and come to your throne of grace, knowing who you are and who they belong to, we're praying for their strength, Lord God, through you. And we just give it to you and have full faith and confidence, Lord God, that you will be the sovereign God that you have always been. So we give it to you, and we leave it right there. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Michelle Adam Stafford. At my pledge of allegiance to the God of the fantastic state of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any requests from the public to speak?
There are no requests.
Seeing no requests, today is Legislative Day Number 26. Approval of Councilment, County Minutes. Councilmen, excuse me.
Motion to approve.
Second. Madam Vice Chair, we would just keep reading. It's part of the consent agenda, so we'll do a motion at the end.
I got it. Consent agenda, approval of County Council Minutes dated October 14th, 2024, first reading of bills, presentation, CB 104, 2025, an act concerning enforcement and referral to the Board of Ethics for the purpose of requiring a mandatory review by Prince George's County Board of Ethics for any person found in violation of Prince George's County Code, Subtitle II, Section 2, Division 46, Community Inclusiveness. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Do I have the quorum call?
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilmember Fisher. Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Motion carries, nine zero.
We are now on CR 126, 2025.
Madam Vice Chair, if we could indicate that CB 104 will be referred to the Committee of the Hall. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Items for discussion, CR 126, Resolution Concerning Foster Care Youth for the Purpose of Establishing a Foster Care Task Force That Will Develop Strategies That Increase the Social Safety Net, Improve Outcomes for Foster Care Youth, Examine Current County Processes, Recommend Policies, and Operational and Budget Actions Within the Department of Social Services and Other County Agencies. This is being sponsored by Burrows, Watson, Olson, Harrison, Adam Stafford, Hawkins, Orietta, Fisher, and Denoga. Is there a motion to discharge out of HHSPS?
Second.
It's been moved, I believe, by Councilmember Olson, seconded by Councilmember Orietta. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair, can I be added to the?
And Blagay, yes.
Yes. Ms. Blagay has asked to be added as a sponsor. And on the motion, Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries ten zero, and Mr. Chair, Agenda Number Three. Motion to-
Thank you. And that will be referred to COW, and Ms. Mar will take up the amendments in COW. CB 107, an eye concerning, oh, is there a motion to approve the additions?
So moved.
It's been moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Councilmember Fisher, to accept the additions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries ten zero.
CB 107, Act Concerning County Personnel for the Purpose of Clarifying the County Personnel Policy Regarding Progressive Discipline, Revising Grounds of Employee Dismissal, Providing for the Immediate Dismissal for Low-Performing Employees, and Generally Regarding County Personnel Law. This is being referred by Councilmember Orietta and referred to COW. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Orietta, seconded by Councilmember Fisher, to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries ten zero.
CB 86, 2025, an eye concerning the Legacy Wealth Construction Incentive Program for the Purpose of Establishing an Incentive Program to Reduce Disparities in Private Sector Construction Projects by Increasing Economic Opportunities for Minority-Owned Businesses and Locally Owned and Operating Businesses in Prince George's County. This is being sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins. Is there a motion to discharge from GOFP?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hawkins, seconded by Councilmember Orietta. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries ten zero, and Mr. Chair, we will need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I also have CB 87.
Pardon me?
CB 87 after that?
Okay.
And also, CB 86 is referred to COW. CB 87, An Act Concerning National Board-Certified Teacher Incentive Program Match for the Purpose of Establishing an Incentive Program to Encourage National Board-Certified Teachers to Teach at Low-Performing Schools in Prince George's County. This is being sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins. Is there a motion to discharge out of EWD?
Move to discharge out of EWD.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Orietta. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries ten zero.
This is also being referred to COW. Is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved by Council Vice Chair Orietta, seconded by Councilmember Watson, to adopt the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries ten zero.
Thank you very much. We will now, I will now recognize some of the elected officials that are in the room. I want to start with our great county executive, Ayesha Bravoy has joined us. It's always a great day when the county executive comes to the county council. So thank you very much, Madam Executive. We also have Senator Mike Jackson, who's here, who just received a great appointment from the governor. You continue to make Crossland High School proud. Thank you for your service. We have Senator Nick Charles, who's here, from the 25th Legislative District. We have his delegate Andrea Harrison here.
She's in the number of them.
Who, oh, she's upstairs. Okay, who is a retired county council member. So thank you for your service, and thank you for your service in the House of Delegates. We also have Mayor Porter here. Might be upstairs. Okay, there you go. Mayor Signor? The mayor from District Eight, are you here, Mayor Lilia? There you go. Forrest Heights. Mayor Nimyard. Nimhart, sorry. And we have our Central Committee Member from the 26th District, Danny Moore King. I hope I've gotten all the elected officials. Yes, I did. Okay, so we're now about to move to public hearings, and I will now impose the rules of the body, which means that no more clapping for the rest of the proceedings, no more clapping. If you agree with something that someone says, sometimes we do a silent clap in the chamber. There's no booing, no clapping, just mostly silence moving forward. We will be imposing those rules for the remainder of this session. Hope everyone understands that. We have a lot of speakers, a lot of nominees. In order for us to get through the business, we want to limit interruptions. So if you would like to express support, do so silently. If you would like to express opposition, do so silently. And when you come to the mic, you have a minute to say whatever you choose to say that's on the topic. I ask that you be respectful, and we'll do the same. We will start with public hearings, the appointment of the following individual. This is appointment 14-25, appointment of the following individual as Chief of Police for Prince George's County, George Nader. Chief, come on up. Madam Executive, are you doing this yourself? Okay, well, then I'll yield to the county executive. As the county executive approaches, is Ms. Ubanks here? Or is there a HHSPS report from you, Councilmember Blagay? Or Ms. Ubanks? You have it? Okay, so I'll start with Ms. Blagay.
And Mr. Chair, may I take a moment to remind individuals that we do have overflow seating upstairs in room 2027, and we also have additional seating in the ZHE hearing room on the third floor. Thank you, sir.
The Health and Human Services and Public Safety Committee met on September 18th, 2025 to consider the appointment of Acting Police Chief George Nader as police chief. Staff provided brief comments on Acting Police Chief George Nader's nomination as police chief, noting that Ms. Danielle Hunter, appointment liaison officer of the county executive, will provide educational and professional background information. Ms. Hunter introduced Acting Police Chief George Nader as the county executive's nominee for chief of police by highlighting his 31 years of law enforcement experience, strong leadership skills, and his record of collaboration with federal and regional partners. She stressed that Acting Police Chief Nader is a Prince George's County native, making his appointment just professional, but also personal, a homecoming to lead, a homecoming to lead the department and the community where he was raised. Deputy Chief James McQuarrie strongly supported Acting Police Chief George Nader's, praising his focus on staffing recruitment technology and addressing the root cause of crime while strengthening the community partnership. Acting Chief Nader thanked the council for the opportunity and emphasized his commitment to both the department and the community he grew up in. He said his focus is on reducing crime and by addressing root causes like poverty and education, improving recruitment with modern approaches, using technology to support officers, and strengthening trust through transparency and community engagement. Councilmembers' discussion focused on staffing shortages, reducing overtime, modernizing recruitment to bring in more officers. They also highlighted the importance of building trust with residents, addressing concerns about ICE involvement, and using technology to improve efficiency and transparency. After the discussion, the Health and Human Services and Public Safety Committee voted favorably 5-0 on Acting Police Chief George Nader's nomination as police chief.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Blagay. Introduction of nominee, Madam County Executive.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of the Prince George's County Council. It is an honor to be before you today. I want to thank Ms. Danielle Hunter for her work in presenting this nominee to the committee and to the council. It is my pleasure to submit to you the appointment of Acting Chief- pleasure to submit to you the appointment of Acting Chief George Nader as the Chief of Police for Prince George's County. Chief Nader brings to this position more than 31 years of distinguished law enforcement service, including over 18 years in executive command. His career reflects an unwavering commitment to public safety, institutional reform, and strategic innovation. Throughout his career, Chief Nader has led major bureaus overseeing critical homeland security operations, managed multimillion dollar budgets and capital projects, and built cross jurisdictional partnerships that have strengthened safety and coordination across our region. He brings deep subject matter expertise in leadership and organizational management, human resources, emergency preparedness, homeland security, budgeting, criminal and internal investigations, and intelligence operations. He has also been instrumental in legislative affairs, policy development, crime analysis, and infrastructure protection. You know, when you appoint your Chief of Police, that speaks a lot to who you are and your values and the connection you want to have to your community. And I can tell you that one of the things, one of the qualities I admire most about our chief is his true connection to this community. He is a graduate of Surratsville High School, and he has never forgotten where he came from or who he is. If elected, or if appointed and confirmed by you, he will serve as our first Lebanese-American Chief of Police in the history of Prince George's County.
Councilmember Blagay? It's always your own people.
And just to finish, since assuming leadership, the difference has been clear. Under Chief Nader's direction, morale across the police department has grown tremendously. Officers are motivated, inspired, and proud to serve. The culture has shifted, built on trust, teamwork, understanding, and transparency. Across the county, residents and officers alike are affectionately referring to Chief Nader and his assistant chief as the Georges of Prince George's, a reflection of their partnership, unity, and shared commitment to excellence. And the results speak for themselves. Crime in Prince George's has hit historic lows, especially since the pandemic. Performance is up, accountability is stronger, and the community confidence in our police force is higher than it's been in years. Chief Nader's leadership is rooted in compassion, discipline, and a deep understanding that public safety is not just about policing, it's about a partnership. Thank you so much for your consideration, and I ask that you confirm this nominee for Chief of Police. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the nominee?
I'd like to thank the Prince George's County for taking time to consider me for this position, and I have a deep gratitude and thank you for Madam County Executive for nominating me for the position. I greatly appreciate it. I'd like to thank all of my family and friends who have showed up. My family from Metro is here upstairs and in this room. I have my family from the Prince George's County Police Department, two agencies that I've served over the past 32 years with dignity, integrity, and passion for the community. The community partnerships that I've built didn't stop when I went back to Metro. I talk to my community still from the county and make sure they were all right, and they knew they could call me if they needed anything. And I did everything that I could to help and make sure that they received the absolute best service that they could when they needed anything, but just keeping in touch with people. What you get in me is, what you see is what you get. You know, you don't have to worry that I'm ever, you know, saying things that I don't mean or doing things that I don't say. So I serve with passion, I serve with integrity, and I value partnership. When the county executive spoke with me about coming back, what really drew me was her vision. She is going to unify Prince George's County government to include the municipalities that we serve, and when we work together, there's nothing that we can't accomplish. I've already established very strong partnerships within the new appointees and the new people that have been put into position here, and those partnerships have already shown to be valued to this police department and the community that we serve. We've seen an increase in applicants of 40%. Something that we dearly need is more people, and I'll never not take advantage of anybody interested in Prince George's County Police Department that's hiring. So with that, if you see that I'm fit for this position, and you, I would ask that you vote favorably for me. What you're going to get is a person that's dedicated to serving this community and serving you. And I understand partnerships, and I understand what your role is in the county and what my role is, and understand that I will support you. And I would thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the speaker's list? And because of the length of today's agenda, each speaker will have one minute to address the body. We'll start with Pastor Tony Lee.
Mr. Chair, to the members of the council, it is my honor and privilege to be able to be here to share. I am the pastor of the Community of Hope AME Church, as well as the executive director of the Hope in Action Gun Violence Prevention Program. I want to first celebrate our county executive for bringing such an excellent nomination, nominee, before us on today. As I got word and saw word that Assistant Chief Nader was being lifted up, I went to give him a call. And I went, and I went in my phone, and I realized in my phone, I still had you as the district commander of District Three. That shows how far we go back, and it shows how much you've been working community. We have walked through communities, and this is someone who has a heart for community, someone who has always been there for community. And in times like these, when there's so much anxiety economically, anxiety about happening at the federal level in our communities, we need a steady hand at the head of the police department. And so I believe that Assistant Chief Nader will be that steady hand to help us to be all that God has called us to be. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Chief Anzalo?
Good afternoon, Council Chair, County Executive. My name is Mike Anzalo. I'm the chief of the Metro Transit Police. I've known George Nader for over 15 years. We worked together when he was with Prince George's County Police, and I was an assistant chief with the DC Police on cross border initiatives, and while he was the District Three Commander, sharing intelligence and investigations across the borders. Then, we reunited when we worked for Chief Pavlik at the Metro Transit Police. And then Chief Pavlik retired, I became the chief, and I chose George as my assistant chief. During that time, George has implemented many community outreach programs and policing initiatives, such as problem awareness policing within the MTPD, with an emphasis on arresting and prosecuting violent repeat offenders. He personally organized community events in DC and Virginia, as well as implemented strategies and working with the youth of our region by establishing a cadet program. He was instrumental in establishing the Metro Transit Police Academy and recruiting and retaining police officers. He worked in criminal investigations, internal investigation, and George was always a leader. He was looking for continuous improvement in the organization. Chief Nader established partnerships with local police departments to provide more visibility on metro rail and bus in Maryland, DC, and Virginia, as well as working with federal task forces on reducing violent crime and getting to the root causes of violent crime where other resources can be provided. His work led to a 55% reduction in serious crime on Metro from 2023 to 2025. Chief Nader understands the basic tenets of police work. He exhibits the Sir Robert Peel's principles of policing, the Peelian principles, which hold true today. He knows the police cannot exist without the community and their support. Chief Nader knows the true measure of a police department is just not the number of arrests and citations, it's the absence of crime and disorder. Chief Nader embraces these ethics when it comes to being an effective police chief, and believes the public trust and accountability are paramount for a police department. Chief Nader understands the community. As mentioned before, he's a native Prince Georgian, and he generally cares for each member of the Prince George's County community, and will carry out his duties to ensure fairness and justice for all. I've observed Chief Nader in times of crisis, and he's a steady leader who is clear minded, focused, and consistent. He knows how to navigate difficult times and situations thoughtfully and with integrity. Chief Nader spent 20 years and retired from Prince George's County Police Department.
That's right, sir.
Thank you very much, Chief.
All right, well, you're getting a good police chief here. So I could go on and on for him, but I hope that the council, you know, confirms him, because I wholeheartedly endorse him. And being a native Prince Georgian myself, I think he'll serve this community well.
Thank you so much. This hearing has concluded. Is there a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Whoever you want.
It's been moved by the vice chair, seconded by council member Fisher, to confirm George Nader as our police chief. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye, and I just want to, once again, thank you, Madam County Executive, for this amazing nominee, police chief. He's doing a fantastic job. I've seen this man everywhere, from the crab feast to walking down the streets, to just, you know, anywhere and everywhere the people of Prince George's are. Senator Jackson, we cannot fault him for not going to Crossland, but Surratsville is not so far. But Chief, I just want to thank you for the leadership that you provided, the morale. You and I attended an event together, probably your second week in office, maybe your first week in office, and it was a lot of police officers there. And you spoke to each and every one of them, and you left me down there with them, which was fine. And I sort of sat as a fly on the wall, like they didn't remember I was there. They had a conversation about how they were so shocked that the Chief of Police would come and greet them and say hello, how you doing, get to know them, and that meant so much to them. And just to be a fly on the wall, to hear them talk about the level of respect and care that they felt, was just amazing to hear. So please keep up the good work. You have the support of this body. Of course, you have the support of our amazing county executive, but continue to do a great job. And I vote yes.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
All right, here we go. All right, I vote yes, and I'd like to explain my vote. I've been able to work with Chief Nader in a variety of capacities since I've just been elected, and he's, every time we've called with an issue, he's been right there to support bringing all the necessary folks to the table, especially as we think about combating issues that are difficult issues, like human trafficking in our district, sorry, excuse me, sex trafficking in our district, more specifically, and also speeding along a lot of our major highways. He's been, you know, someone who's been a thought partner on how we can consider specific legislation around that, and I'm really grateful for the work we've done together so far, and looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Blagay.
Thank you, and I vote aye. And I just want to explain my vote. I just want to thank you. You hit the ground running. I mean, I'm pretty sure you're going to hear from every council member. We see you almost weekly. But the most touching thing is that we are in a community where we're trying to implement trust of our law enforcement, and you are the true leader on that. The most memorable time for me was having a resident that was grieving the loss of her son, and you brought the whole group in to make her know that we were working as a team to make sure we find justice for her son. You didn't, you know, most police chiefs don't do that. You know, that's not there. They're just there to resolve the crime, but you brought the team in and comforted her in a way that made her trust the process and say, and she actually said after me, after this meeting, she said, I'm just going to be patient and wait. And she was not very worked up before. So thank you so much. Even having us in a room with a proclamation for a pastor and that you walked that room and talked to almost every resident in that room, you are bringing back the trust that we need, and that's step one. So thank you so much. I vote aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Very pleased to vote aye on a truly excellent nomination.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you so much. I vote aye. And to explain my vote, there's a lot I could say about you, Chief Nader, but I will bring everyone to this room to, one morning where it was back to school, and you and your team met me at Langley Park Elementary School. And the care that you have for the immigrant community that I represent, and I represent the largest Latino community in the county, and the shock in your face that I saw, and I, when I actually was talking to County Executive Bravoy about this story, I teared up, and I said, I'm not going to tear up here. I think, you know, seeing how residents were actually scared, and what's going on with ICE in our community, attacking my community every single day, the heart that you felt for those parents and those kids is something that will stick with me, and that brings me a sense of confidence and reassurance in my vote for you today. I know that you and I are on the same page on what it takes to make a safer Prince Georgians, and those that want to hurt Prince Georgians better look out for Chief Nader. And so, you know, I can go on and on about that, but you also have that balance in how you care. And so I just appreciate you, and I'm proud to vote aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chief, I want to say I proudly vote yes for you. I've known you for many years. You've been a man of integrity, humility, care, and compassion for the people that you serve. What really struck out to me is you were on the job for no more than two or three weeks, and you took a call from me, and I was calling you about a constituent that was in my community, that their daughter had autism, but she was a runaway. She needed help, and she was found in Baltimore City. And you called the police commissioner of Baltimore City, and you worked to make sure that she was found and she was safe, where that individual was that close to being sex trafficked and human trafficked. And you called me at 11:00 PM at night, and you said, we found her. Those are the type of leaders that we want, and you embody the essence of leadership and care. I've heard that from everyone I've ever come in contact with you. And so I know that you will take our Prince George's County Police Department where it needs to go. I'm here to support in any way that I can. You have a friend in me, you have a champion in me, and I look forward to serving with you for the remainder of the years that I have. But I want to thank you for your leadership. And to all the men and women of the Prince George's County Police Department for all the work that they do protecting the welfare of the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, this is me getting ready to cast my vote. Mr. Chief, to the senator from the 27th District, and our great county council chair, all of you happen to come from that alma mater, Crossland. Our county exec has come and graduated from, I believe it's Lago High School. But with all the schools in Prince George's County, Oxon Hill still reigns supreme. But on a serious note, Chief, I recall years ago, when you may remember this moment, we were over at the Oaks, Chapel Oaks Volunteer File Department, and it had just gotten out that you had made the professional decision to go and go to Metro. And I'll never forget, the first person that walked up to you was then District Five Council Member Andrea Harrison, expressing to you how much she was going to miss you. And Lord knows, I was trying to figure out how District Seven Council Member, then District Seven Council Member Karen Toles got over to Chapel Oaks, and she expressed, and then at the time, current county executive, Reshern Baker, all these people were coming up to you, expressing their disappointment. What was amazing about it- What was amazing about it was the number of leaders and municipal leaders from that area, Capitol Heights, Fairmont Heights, those who always talk about they are not getting the service, and they spoke about how much they were going to miss your accessibility. And county executive, you continue to amaze me as you elevate this county and the leaders and directors you're bringing around you. You're not only competent, you've got the courage to bring the right people for the right reasons to help our county become better than you found it, and I'm so grateful at this time, and you know you kicked my buddy in the campaign, so I can say openly and positively thank you. This county is prepared for this moment because you're leading us, and I'm so grateful to watch and participate in what you're going to do over the next 10 years, if you stay that long. But anyway, thank you, and Chief, I'm grateful to be able to sit at this dais and have a chance to vote for you because you had, you had, you're what the police officer called a police officer, and it was confirmed by, before the chair dongs me, I'm going to shut up, but it was confirmed by, you had Reverend Tony Lee here, and he's considered across the country a preacher's preacher, and to know you would have someone like that speak for you, it speaks volumes of the man you are and the professional you are. Good luck to you and the men and women of the police department, and keep Brian Fisher around you, he's a good man. Take care, I vote yes.
Mr. Olson.
Thank you. I want to, I want to thank County Executive Brave Boy for the nomination of George Nader. He has already done amazing things. He's been extremely responsive. We, even yesterday, I texted him, and he got on the phone to the U.S. Park Police Chief, referencing the tragedy that I spoke about during the prayer this morning, the hit-and-run that killed a community leader, Lisa Martin. But he has been very responsive, and I know that he's going to continue to do a great job for us. You are a leader, you are the right leader for our time, and I vote aye.
Vice Chair Orieda.
I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues by saying I'm so excited that I've been able to get to know you in this role, get the opportunity to work with you, echo that county executive, you hit the ground running with amazing appointments and decisions, and this just is another reflection of your leadership. And as the chair mentioned, within, I think it was two days of you getting this role, I said, "Hey, I'm having an event, can you show up?" And not only did you show up, you had your team there, you all were helping to pass out crabs and be with the community, and every single time I've asked, you've shown up. Sometimes I don't even ask, you just see something and you show up, and that level of partnership is one that I have not experienced in the last three years. So, I just thank you for the direction we're going in, and I thank you for the leadership of the county executive saying this is how we're going to move forward, as I vote aye.
Ms. Watson.
Wow, I get to go last, as always, but Chief Nader, I just can't say enough about you. I think my colleagues have said it all, but the one thing that I would like to say is, you know, kindness and compassion means a lot, especially when it comes to police chief, because you see things and you really care about the people, and I see that, I've heard that, and I just appreciate that, because you could turn, you know, an eye to it, not really have any empathy for what you see, because you see such, you know, some horrible things on a daily basis. So, having that empathy really means a lot, and I just appreciate all that you've done for the residents, especially in District Four, and of course, across the county. But I applaud you, I just appreciate that you're here, I thank you for your partnership. Thank you to Madam County Executive for what, for the appointment, and I also want to thank your team, because, you know, a great team makes a great leader. And I just got to shout out George Nichols, because the two Georges are awesome together, and I just, I thank you for all that you've done so far and all that you're going to do. So, just know you have a partner here in District Four, and thank you for all your great work, and I'm honored to say, to vote aye.
Motion carries ten zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chief. I know you have an appointment that you have to run to, so thank you very much. Well, no clapping, but, all right. Appointment, and also, Madam Clerk, when council members explain their vote, let's put them on a time limit of one minute. Appointment 15-25, the appointment of the following individual as Director of the Department of the Environment of Prince George's County, Dr. Samuel Moki. I will now turn to either Councilmember Olson or Councilmember Battle, I mean, Councilmember Olson or Mr. Battle. You have it? Okay, I'll turn to Councilmember Olson for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Transportation, Infrastructure, Energy, and Environment Committee convened on October 9th, 2025, to consider the appointment of Dr. Samuel Moki as the Director of the Prince George's County Department of the Environment. The appointment package was transmitted to the council by County Executive Brave Boy on July 6th, 2025. The public hearing on the appointment is scheduled for today, October 21st, 2025. The county executive's appointments liaison, Danielle Hunter, summarized the background of the appointee for the committee. Dr. Moki provided remarks on his background and desire to serve as DOE Director. An extensive list of speakers included both supporters and opponents of the appointment. The committee members asked Dr. Moki questions regarding his ideas and the county's challenges related to managing stormwater and solid waste, and offered him the opportunity to respond to questions and discuss his career activities related to the environment. After discussion, the committee voted favorably on the appointment by a vote of 311. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And now I'll turn to our county executive for the introduction of the nominee.
Thank you so much again, Mr. Chair, and also the esteemed members of the Prince George's County Council. It is my honor to stand before you today to formally submit for appointment the name of Dr. Samuel Belsham Moki as the Director of the Prince George's County Department of Environment. This moment is more than a personal decision. It's about continuing the progress we've made to restore trust, accountability, and excellence in one of our most vital departments in county government. For far too long, the challenges within the Department of Environment did not stem from the actions of one person, but from years and years of structural neglect and administrative inconsistency. Since appointing Dr. Moki as Acting Director this past June, I have seen firsthand a complete turnaround. Under his leadership, the department has been rebuilt, brick by brick, on the foundation of credibility, compliance, and fiscal responsibility. Let me be clear about what this transformation looks like. The department has achieved more than $31 million in cost savings for stormwater management projects through innovative design, smarter contracting, and stronger operational efficiency. He has delivered $2 million in capital improvements at our Animal Services Division, which for years has been a significant problem, and I think we all know that. And he has directed the Beautification Division to partner with Strike Force 311, clearing a major backlog of service requests and producing visible, measurable improvements to our community. These are not small steps. They represent a fundamental shift, a shift towards accountability, sustainability, and measurable performance. Dr. Moki brings to his role an extraordinary depth of experience and education. He holds a law degree, two master's degrees, one in criminal justice and one in environmental management, and a PhD from Howard University with a minor in public administration. He has spent more than 22 years teaching undergraduate and graduate students in environmental policy, public administration, and justice studies, helping to shape the next generation of public leaders. He has served this county as Special Assistant to the Director, Associate Director, and Solid Waste Commissioner and Grants Manager. He was honored by the Anacostia Watershed Restoration Partnership for his leadership of the Anacostia Watershed Management Committee. And beyond our borders, he represented our county and our state as a public board member with the U.S. Departments of State, Commerce, and Agriculture as a Commissioner on the Governor's, oh, sorry, and as a Commissioner on the Governor's Commission for African Affairs. If appointed, Dr. Moki will be our first Cameroonian-born Director of the Department of Environment. He has advanced our water quality projects while reducing projected costs by 20%. He has launched major climate and energy initiatives, including plans for the very first Climate Leadership Summit right here in Prince George's County in November. He has led efforts to plant more than 2,000 trees in the next six months, expand community engagement, and improve customer service across the board. I can tell you from those who work with him daily, the morale has improved, he's efficient, he's effective, he's an absolutely compassionate leader for the Department of Environment, and I ask respectfully for your favorable consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam County Executive. Comments from the nominee?
The Lord is my shepherd, my strength, my protector, and my salvation. Who shall I fear? To the Chair of the County Council, the Honorable Ed Burrows, Vice Chair, Honorable Chris Orieda, Honorable Blague, Honorable Adams, Honorable Hawkins, Honorable Ivy, in your absence, Honorable Harrison, Honorable Olson, Honorable Watson, Honorable Fisher, and Honorable Donoga, I thank all of you for the opportunity to be before you on this historic day, to speak on my nomination to become the Director of the Department of Environment for Prince George's County. Let me also use this opportunity to thank you, Madam County Executive, the Honorable Ayesha Brave Boy, for nominating me to this position. Madam County Exec, on behalf of my wife, Jackie, who is here, my children, my family, my community, and the good people of this county, I thank you for this honor, this privilege, this opportunity, this confidence that you have bestowed on me. Even more impressive, Madam County Exec, it is the exuberance of your steadfast support for me, unwavering, even when it was not convenient for you. Madam County Exec and members of the County Council, thank you for demonstrating to the world that Prince George's County is a county of diversity, it's a county of multiculturalism, it's a county of inclusion, it's a county of integration, it's a county of possibilities. Let me thank my wife, Jackie, for who I have shared my life for 36 years, and six years before that. So, I've been together with her for 42 years, and my daughter, Effie, Lee, and Ike, and their spouses, and my other family members, and all those who came here to support me. If I may borrow and modify from former President Barack Obama, only in Prince George's County would my story be possible. As an immigrant from Africa, whose mother never, ever saw the four walls of any formal educational institution, and a father whose highest educational qualification was completion of elementary school, I defy the odds because of God's grace by earning the highest academic qualification, and standing here today with your approval to become the Director of the Department of Environment. The Lord, I say again, is my strength, my guide, my protector, and my provider. I entered public service at Prince George's County Department of Environment because of the promise of the county. It provides me with the opportunity to improve the environmental quality and aesthetics of this beautiful land that fills me with so much pride. Oh, yes, I love this county. I have lived here for 25 years, raised my children here, own houses here, participate in several community building projects and initiatives. My wife manages our family business as an assisted living home to cater for the older population of this county. For over 20 years, I have taught and mentored thousands of college students right here in Prince George's County. Make no mistake, Prince George's County is my home. Make no mistake, Prince George's County is our home. As you may already know, I served in the Department of Environment in several capacities before, as Special Assistant to the Director, as Associate Director, Grants Manager, and Commissioner for Solid Waste. It is one of these reasons, one of the reasons why I enthusiastically embrace this opportunity to serve again. Since my return as Acting Director, for the past three months and 21 days, and yes, I am counting, I have worked to support the county executive Brave Boys Project Elevate in the following ways. $31 million in cost savings for stormwater projects. Folks, that was not easy to achieve. $2 million in capital improvement projects at the animal services shelter on the way, and integration of communications between the Animal Services Division and the police, Prince George's Police Department. DOE support for the Strike Force 311 Task Force, clearing thousands of 311 backlog, citizens' complaints, review of flood mitigation plans and risk assessment, and municipal coordination of three buffers designs, planting, including tree planting in cities municipalities like the district, like, like Forest Heights and District Heights, residential solar program implementation, and Unite Unified Climate Action Plan, including planning for the Brave Boy Climate Summit scheduled for November 20th, 2025, focus on increasing food and wood composting operations and methane gas capture at the landfill. Our county is at a defining moment. The choices we make today about how we manage our resources, protect our waterways, and plan our communities will determine the quality of life for generations to come. The environment is not a separate issue, it is the foundation of our health, our economy, and our collective well-being. Prince George's County has already shown that progress, preservation can coexist. From our stormwater management innovations to our growing network of green spaces, recycling initiatives, and clean energy programs, we have proven that local action can drive regional and even national impact. But our vision cannot stop there. As the leader of the Department of Environment, I intend to work with my colleagues at DOE to drive environmental innovation and environmental justice, where every neighborhood, regardless of their zip code, benefits from clean air, clean water, and clean energy, where public buildings model sustainability, and where green jobs empower residents. Under my leadership, under my leadership, DOE is currently pursuing or exploring further innovative technology-based solutions to municipal waste that will continue to divert waste from the landfill. DOE, under my leadership, will transform good customer service into a strategic goal. DOE, under my leadership, will educate, empower, and work with residents of this county to take actions to protect the environment. I'm getting to the end. DOE, under my leadership, will work to expand environmental initiatives like tree planting, community cleanups, and residential solar programs. DOE, under my leadership, will expand education and outreach services in collaboration with Spanish organizations to help immigrant communities like those in Louisdale, Hyattville, Langley Park, to deal better with trash and recycling, to keep their communities cleaner. That is the Prince George's County. That is the Prince George's County we intend to create with my colleagues at DOE, and in collaboration with environmental groups, community organizations, and the residents of Prince George's County. I commit to be the Director of the Department of Environment for all Prince Georgians, even those who are here today to oppose my nomination. I understand this is democracy in action. I have taught this thing for over 20 years. However, when all this is settled, and I am honored to be confirmed, I stretch my hands to you all, so that we can together preserve and enhance this environment which we all love. Let us be the generation that turns our environmental commitments into lasting change, that transforms awareness into action, and action into legacy of stewardship that defines who we are as a county. There is no Planet B, as in, there is no Plan B when it comes to saving our environment and our planet. This is the only planet we have.
Dr. Moki?
Let us work together to save it. I ask for your vote to be confirmed as the Director of the Department of Environment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, uh, no clapping. All right, so we've heard from the nominee, now we'll move to the speakers list. The first speaker is Taylor Frazier. And if the other speakers want to line up behind her, after that, it'll be Sherman Hardy, then Michael Bloom, and then Beverly John. Taylor, the floor is yours.
Okay. Hello, council members and county residents. My name is Taylor Frazier McCollum, and I'm from Landover, Maryland. I'm currently fighting the proposed data center at Landover Mall. My petition on change.org to stop that project has over 21,000 signatures. I stand here representing them. We want a Director of the Environment who won't fast-track data centers, and I fear that Samuel Moki doesn't have the long-term interest of the people at heart. Most people will get up here and talk about how they have interacted with Samuel Moki just over the past few months, and that's what alarms me. At the TIE meeting, his subordinates testified. In my opinion, it's unethical to have subordinates testify, period. How can this council negate that? Moki claims 31 million in savings in three months. Unless he mismanaged something, again, I feel he's taking credit for something that was already in the works. Samuel Moki was fired in 2014 from the Department of Environmental Resources for persistent gross negligence. Did the Lord guide him then? County Executive Ray Boy formally upheld his firing when she was the state's attorney in Prince George's County. How is it she can turn a blind eye to his past transgressions that led to the county paying thousands in fines? I want leadership that cares about the future, not for themselves, but just, not for just themselves, but for the world. Don't let this be a show of trumpery. If that word is new to your vocabulary, let me help you out. Trumpery means showy but worthless. What good is this meeting if you don't look at opposing arguments? Thank you.
Next, Sherman Hardy.
You know, people used to call Prince George's County the crown jewel of Maryland. Now it's starting to look a lot more like Gotham City, where corruption crawls out of retirement and the same villains keep getting promoted. Today's council session is deja vu. The same faces, the same failures, the same excuses, and somehow the same people keep coming back to power. Everywhere you turn, someone who once failed this county has been honored with another title, another office, another paycheck. This isn't redemption, it's recycling. And I have to ask, what happened to the heroes? What happened to courage? The way this council moved its nomination from committee straight to a full vote, you think the bat signal went out for cowardice, not courage. You said you needed more information? Well, here's a thought, maybe do your homework before the test, not doing it. You don't need more information, you need more integrity. This isn't leadership, it's an audition for a sequel nobody asked for. Gotham County, Return of the Unqualified. And so here I am, the dark night of accountability, not because I wanted to be, but because too many people, too many of you have forgotten why you were elected in the first place. You can ignore my words this morning, but you can't silence the people who sent me, because justice doesn't vanish when the lights go out. It waits, and sooner or later, it comes knocking.
Next, we'll have Michael Bloom. Don't put your hand in the face of the County Executive. It was too close for my comfort. All right.
My name is Michael Bloom, I live in Berwyn Heights, I'm on the Green Team. The fact that a man guilty of gross negligence and dishonesty by the Personnel Board and the Appellate Court of Maryland twice is sitting here before this council is an utter travesty. Councilmember Hawkins, have you forgotten that he refused to spend 40 million on stormwater management and then lied to the court about it? If he is confirmed, Moki will oversee one of the county's most ambitious and expensive environmental undertakings, the Clean Water Partnership, tasked with retrofitting thousands of acres of impervious surfaces using green infrastructure. Do you know what Moki's record is on this subject?
Sir, you have to address the council.
County Executive Brave Boy?
Sir, you have to-
Do you know what his record is? Forty-five acres. With his Climate Action Plan, Prince George's County has asserted its commitment to protecting our environment. He's not the man to do it.
Beverly John, next we'll have Stacy Hartwell, and then Sean Smith, then Greg Smith. Ms. John, maybe again?
Good morning, County Council. I must oppose this appointment because of the role and the responsibilities of the Department of the Environment. It's way too important to our public health and to our environmental safety to hand over leadership to one person without doing the due diligence of at least looking at multiple other viable candidates. While the county executive may have the right to propose a single appointment, I question the wisdom of that, of making such a controversial selection when there are serious environmental challenges coming to our county from data center development that is being fast-tracked without any real community input. This appointment, to me, is yet another example of a lack of transparency and a disregard for our community. And without the transparency, there is no accountability. It is clear that's what's happening, and I say shame. Thank you.
Stacy Hartwell?
I'm the one who, I signed it online, but I didn't hear my name called, so.
There are 45 speakers, so if I haven't said your name, you're not up. Stacy Hartwell?
You've heard all the wonderful thoughts, feelings, and opinions about Mr. Moki, but let me give you some facts. Mr. Moki was fired for gross negligence from the very department you want him to head, an incident that cost taxpayers time, money, and confidence. Since then, he has gained no relevant experience, has never managed a department or budget of this size, and questions remain about his academic and so-called legal credentials. #TrustButVerify. In the Subcommittee hearing, no environmental or industry organization supported his nomination, only friends, clergy, and county employees raising ethical concerns about the process which may have legal ramifications for the county. Rehiring someone who once failed this department undermines the integrity, demoralizes staff, erodes public trust. I urge you to reject this appointment and choose competence and accountability over convenience and political pressure. P.S. We were not extended an invitation to the Climate Summit. So that's it for inclusion.
Greg Smith, and Sean Smith.
Thank you, everyone, for having me today. Dr. Moki, I know you've done some great things. I just have a question as a resident.
Sir?
Yes?
Your comments have to be addressed to the council, not to Dr. Moki.
Right here? Okay, thank you, sir. Forgive me, it's my first time speaking.
No problem at all.
Nearly a decade ago.
Let's restart your time, because I took up some time clarifying the rules.
Thank you.
So we'll start you back in one minute.
Oh, we've been cut down to a minute? I was told we had two.
Oh, you have one minute.
Fantastic, okay, give me one second. All right, I'm ready. Dr. Moki stands before this county asking for trust, but trust has to be earned, not reissued. Ten years ago, he was fired for cause over stormwater mismanagement. That decision wasn't a rumor, it was upheld by the Personnel Board, the Circuit Court, and the State Court of Appeals. He says he was scapegoated, that the program was underfunded, that he didn't have access to the 40 million stormwater fund, but if that's true, I have one question as a resident, who stopped you from doing your job? If higher leadership tied your hands, what are their names? If the system failed you, show us the paper trail, because without proof, your story is just another version of the same old excuse. This isn't about character, this isn't about kindness. Your coworkers say you're affable and supportive, and that's great, but affability is not accountability. We lost environmental ground during your watch, we paid fines, our waterways suffered. Now you're back saying this time will be different. Prove it, open the book, show us the results, show us where the stakes are, because we already know they're in the White House. They don't deserve to be in our county.
Thank you very much. Greg Smith?
Thank you.
After Greg Smith, we'll have Edwin Green and Nawanda Holt.
Good afternoon, council members. I testified before the TIE Committee opposing Dr. Moki's appointment. I still have serious concerns about Dr. Moki's qualifications for this job. Not because I don't, your life story, his life story is, in fact, it's inspiring, it's impressive. I have concerns, though, about, about his dismissal with cause in 2014, and then the allegations that he was scapegoated, but no evidence. Dr. Moki's right. The programs that are overseen, and I think Councilmember Fisher said the same, the programs overseen by the Department of Environment touch everybody's life in this county and in the surrounding region in many ways. You have the right and the responsibility to serve as a check and balance, to oversee what happens in our county's apartments. I think you also have the right and responsibility, I think under the county charter, rather than approving Dr. Moki a permanent position, to extend his acting directorship by six months, by resolution. That may be the middle way for you, where you can examine his performance for six months and then determine whether or not you feel confident that he'll carry out and fulfill the law as he oversees policies, programs, and priorities. Thanks, take care.
Edwin Green, Nawanda Holt, now to Nawanda Holt. Carlos Sanchez.
Good afternoon, everyone. They say sometimes in speaking I don't need a microphone. I grew up with 15 siblings, so I had to shout loud. But I'm here because I do want to say this. As a member of the Green Team for Environmental Projects in District Heights, if you confirm Dr. Samuel, I hope he will keep his open-door commitment that's made and sit down with me so that I can work through and out the cloud hanging over him that could also possibly hang over the council. That's a fair and unbiased and neutral position. His credentials are untouchable. The cloud is not, and will probably follow him for the rest of his life. I am a fair, believing person, and I want to be fair to him, because there's no way anybody in this community or county know the actual facts and details or been privy of-
Excuse me, Mr. Green?
-of his situation. Is that my minute?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm used to two.
Okay, no problem. Nawanda Holt?
Good afternoon. My name is Nawanda Holt, and I'm a retired federal employee. I'm also a resident of Prince George's County. I'm here to oppose the appointment of Dr. Samuel Moki as Director of Department of the Environment. This decision isn't about personality or politics, it's about accountability, integrity, and public trust. In 2014, Dr. Moki was terminated from his, the same department for gross negligence after failing to manage the county's stormwater pollution program, leading to Clean Water Act violations and costly fines. His dismissal was upheld by several branches, and ultimately, the Maryland Appellate Court, which found his conduct, called into serious question his trustworthiness, integrity. As an African-American woman, I understand how minorities can sometimes be dealt a bad hand or made as scapegoats. I've seen racial inequities in government and in workplaces, but this reappointment should not be about correcting possible perceived racial injustice. Prince George's County is a majority African-American community, and with that comes a duty to demonstrate leadership rooted in merit, transparency, and accountability, not political favor or old loyalties. If anything, our shared identity should inspire us to strive for better, to be forward-leaning, transparent, and bold enough to break the perception of cronyism by choosing new and capable leadership. I respectfully urge this council to reject this appointment and instead open a transparent, competitive search for a leader who can rebuild trust, drive innovation, and restore credibility, especially now when the county can benefit from workforce reductions at the Environmental Protection Agency by attracting experienced, highly qualified professionals. Prince George's County has an opportunity to lead by example, let's seize it. Thank you.
Marian Dombrosky. Is Carlos Sanchez here? We'll move on. Is Dr. Vanessa Lee here? And if you're in the overflow room, feel free to come down when I call your name. We'll circle back to you if you were in the overflow room.
Sorry, my phone turned upside down. I chair the Community Advisory Committee of the Restoration Partnership. Prince George's County is the birthplace of low-impact development. Researchers at the University of Maryland revolutionized stormwater management. Dr. Moki did not contribute to these efforts. Through the Restoration Partnership, jurisdictions coordinate activities and report progress. Unfortunately, commitment to the partnership, sorry, my phone slipped, has declined and with it our performance and reputation. DC and Montgomery's projects are transforming neighborhoods, holding polluters accountable, working strategically, and maximizing research, I mean, resources. Dr. Moki has not participated or promoted work across borders. Innovation under, oh, sorry, we endorse the comments of the Anacostia Riverkeeper and welcome opportunities to collaborate with the department. Both OCAC and Riverkeeper oppose this nomination and request that the county leadership undertake a comprehensive search for Dr. Moki's successor. Innovation under his director with a record of proven success and untarnished representation is needed. While his credentials are impressive and his story inspirational-
Excuse me?
-Dr. Moki, his record lacks the-
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Your time has expired. Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, when they hit one minute, if you can make sure that at the one-minute mark, the sound goes off, because they're reading their speech, they might not be looking at the time clock.
Yeah, it's impossible. I mean, we all had to edit our, half our testimony.
I understand, thank you very much.
So, yeah, thank you very much.
Next, we'll have Dr. Wilbur Wilson, Karen Gooden, and Rodney Taylor. Want to put the mic up to your-
Members of this illustrious council. I was just sitting back there listening. My good friend, my brother, you're fine. What you've heard is almost like what we saw back in the '70s, like an assassination. And I think that Prince George's County, and I want to thank you, Chairman, I mean, County Executive, Ray Boy, for nominating Dr. Sam Mingo. I am kind of disheartened, because we have moved so far into the future. This is the most qualified person in Prince George's County. To deny him of the right to serve after everything he's done for this county, and just because I would hope that you will vote for my good friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Gooden, Rodney Taylor, Stanley Bostic.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much, and members of the council. Again, my name is Karen Williams-Gooden, and I've been a practicing attorney in Maryland for the past 35 years, serving in both top management roles at both the state and county levels, having worked for two governors and six county executives. I've had the privilege of working as Legislative Counsel for the Department- I've had the privilege of working as legislative counsel for the Department of the Environment for several years, and I'm really honored to offer my full support for Dr. Samuel B. Moki's nomination as Director. Since meeting Dr. Moki, I've witnessed firsthand his deep commitment to the department's mission, a healthy, beautiful, and sustainable Prince George's County. His leadership has really already lifted morale and brought renewed energy to our agency. Dr. Moki is a rare blend of intellect, competence, and empathy. He holds five academic degrees, including a PhD in political science, a law degree, two master's degrees, and one in environmental science. And I'm also a two-time graduate of Howard University and I respect the hard work that he put in to get those degrees. He bridges both the scientific and human dimensions of environmental stewardship. He inspires staff, supports students, and understands and cares about the people he serves. And Dr. Moki loves this democracy. That's not just management. I urge you to support him. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Rodney Taylor. I come to support Dr. Moki this morning. I come to let you know, in my 42-year career here in Prince George's County, seeing many county executives, many directors within the Department of Environment, my whole career has been in the Department of Environment. Dr. Moki has demonstrated what I believe to be the best, when I talk about leadership within an organization. You have an organization now that's come together like a family, is moving in one direction under the leadership of Dr. Moki. He spends time with all his employees when they come in his office. It's just amazing to watch him work and how he spends time with his staff, sitting on couches, talking, listening to people. We are part of all the decisions. He has great associate directors, and I understand how the chain of command goes. Sometimes somebody, it comes downhill and one person might be the one to take the load, but I come to tell you that Dr. Moki is the right decision for Department of the Environment, and I promise you with him, myself, and all the other associate directors, Department of the Environment will be one of the best departments within Prince George's County. I want you to vote yes for Dr. Moki.
Thank you. Stanley Bostic. Derek Coley. Is Gabriella Correa? Okay, I see Derek Coley's making his way, and I've realized that there are some people upstairs in overflow, so come on down.
County Council, Council Chair Burrows, Vice Chair Ariada, members, thank you for the opportunity to be here in support of Dr. Samuel Moki for Department of Environment. I'm Derek Coley. I serve as the Deputy Director. And first and foremost, I am pleased to be here because under Dr. Moki's leadership, we have seen dramatic improvements in terms of the morale and a clear vision, based on the guideposts that have been set by the county executive. You know, today's nomination and what I see in Dr. Moki's character as the leader for our agency is about the ability to have a clear, clear vision and the ability to touch individuals and empower them to be their very best. He's committed to environmental stewardship and protection. Most importantly, he's a pragmatic leader in terms of research and information before he makes a policy decision. I urge you all to support him in his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Bennett. George Nichols. Just identify yourselves when you come up and speak. I see Mr. Bennett just walked in. Please identify yourself.
Good morning, Council, Chair Burrows, council members, and county exec. My name is George Nichol. I'm here to support the county, um, the nominee for Mr. Sam Moki. Sam, since his appointment to head the department, we've seen a lot of changes within the department. He has been willing to meet with everybody to seek whatever ideas you have to make sure the county gets better. I have been working with the Department of Environment for almost thirty-something years. I listen to some of these people to just to know what it takes to run that department. And I know Sam Moki has the tenacity and the desire to move that department to another level. His passion for environmental issues cannot be touched. I will ask that you support his nomination and vote positively for him. I just want to give a shout out to my brother there, well, Mr. Major Edick, we went to the same school, Virginia Tech.
Thank you. Next speaker can come up. Just identify yourself so that we notate you on the sign-up sheet.
Good afternoon. I'm Gabriella Correa. I'm here to support the nomination of Dr.- My name is Gabriella Correa and I'm here to support the nomination of Dr. Moki. Not only is he highly knowledgeable and professional, but he also shows a lot of empathy, which is very important in the work environment. Dr. Moki takes time out of his day to come around and speak to us one-on-one and show us how we are doing, and, which has really stuck to me because if you're happy and you're willing to do the work, it makes, also makes a great leader. I believe that this is a reflection of his genuine care and leadership. Dr. Moki is deeply passionate, not only about the environment, but also customer service, and that is something that he has made a point since day one. He is also very dedicated to helping the community, not only, but also mainly with the Hispanic community, which is something that we really need in Prince George's County. We are very grateful to have him as our Director, and I'm confident that we will continue to do great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, come up. Also, David Fisher, Dawn Hawkins Nixon, Maryland, I apologize for your last name, but go ahead, introduce yourself.
Uh, good morning, Chair Burrows, Council. My name is Anthony Bennett. I serve as the Deputy Director for the Department of the Environment. Um, I, I'm looking at this from a different point. Uh, I'm, I'm a former Inspector General, so I look at it through the lens of accountability, compliance, et cetera. When I came onto DOE, one of the first things that Dr. Moki said when he pulled me into his office, he wanted me to use these skills to try and find better things for this county, find where the efficiency lapses are, how can we work on correcting waste fraud abuse? And he's given, he's given me the green light to do all of these things. As he stated in his, uh, his conversation earlier, we've already worked to find savings coming from DOE for the county, and we're looking forward to doing more. So I, I, I wholeheartedly hope that you confirm Dr. Moki. We have some great things that we're doing, and I'm looking forward to working with him one-on-one to do many more things. So again, I thank you for your time and your efforts.
My name is Dawn Hawkins Nixon and I am the Associate Director for Sustainability Division within the Department of the Environment. I've known Dr. Moki for many, many years, but I'm going to get right to the point. Uh, Mr. Dr. Moki is an exceptional leader in the Department of the Environment. He has a strong passion for the, the, the natural environment, for the people who work under him, for just bringing community and the county together to resolve problems. Um, as many of you are aware, we do have flooding issues in the county. We do have areas where we are lacking green space, green infrastructure. We are at a point where we know we're in a climate crisis. And Dr. Moki does a tremendous job at working across the division, across the department to bring all of those resources together, all that expertise together, to help better serve the residents of Prince George's County. So with that, I will say that Dr. Moki is an exceptional leader for the Department of the Environment, and we can trust that he will bring resolve for the county residents.
My name is Stanley Bostic. Well, let me, let me, my name is the illustrious Stanley Bostic, 33rd degree of the Royal 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 King Solomon Law to the State of Maryland. And I'm also the Fleet Manager for DOE. My duties are to check invoices, pay invoices. Matter of fact, I also oversee at least a budget of $40 million per year for the DOE at the landfill. My question is that I know for a fact my supervisors check my invoices, they make sure they're approved before I make any decision. So back in 2014, who oversee'd his? Who was his superiors to, to make sure that he was doing the correct thing? All thing I want to say is that I support Dr. Moki, and I think that he would make a good Director for the Department of Environment. Thank you.
Is Randolph Wilson here? And then Kelly Porter, and Joseph Gilmore.
My name is Randolph Wilson. I'm a project manager with the Prince George's County Department of the Environment. Um, I have the pleasure of serving as the project manager specifically for the county's organic composting facility. So whilst one of my colleagues are speaking positively to our Director, I also want to go ahead and chime in with the same regards. Um, and I want to mention a few points if I can. Dr. Moki's exemplary leadership qualities and vast knowledge within the environmental field justifies fair nomination for the position at hand. As a long-term resident of Prince George's County, Dr. Moki has a profound awareness for the path in which community engagement and environmental stewardship intersect. A candidate that understands Prince George's County's governmental framework and efforts to ensure fiscal management is prioritized while progressively pursuing sustainably sound processes and initiatives is the ultimate option. A representative that has the historical experience and expertise at various levels within the environmental forefront is the answer to the void which should be filled. A void that requires an individual to exude passion and dedication while continuing the mission to ensure our environment is a safe haven for generations to learn and grow. In short, the factors mentioned above are the ultimate qualifiers that confidently justify my consideration and nomination of Dr. Samuel Moki. An individual that can answer the call to each component raised and will serve Prince George's County in good faith of what these areas of leadership entail at the Prince George's County Department of the Environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kelly Porter?
Esteemed council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you in support of Dr. Samuel Moki's confirmation here today. As a resident of the Prince George's County, I wish to state that I, I trust in our county executive's judgment and believe that she should be afforded a chance to create a cabinet with trusted staff members and advisors of her choosing in order to see her agenda go forward. I believe that Dr. Moki has been a victim of political circumstance and conditions far beyond his control, and that despite how unfairly he has been portrayed by the media, he is the right person for the job. For us to have effective working government, I believe we need the best people heading our agencies, and based on everything I've seen, heard, and experienced, I believe Dr. Moki is the person for the Department of the Environment. Thank you.
Joseph Gilmore, Joe Gassons?
Good morning, Chair Burrows and ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Pastor Joseph A. Gilmore Jr., Pastor Monty from Baptist Church in Upper Marlboro, Maryland. I've known Dr. Moki for 20-plus years, and I believe that he is the right choice for the Department of Environment. I'm confident in our county executive, brave boy, that she has made the correct choice. Sam possesses integrity, good character, and morally, he is a good man. I know that he's been vilified by the media and others, but I want to say to all of you in this room, if any of us are perfect, then you try walking on water. So I would urge the council to vote positively for the confirmation of Dr. Samuel B. Moki. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Lisa Price. Ron Smith. Edwin Green.
I'm sorry, I didn't know, I spoke earlier on this.
Okay, you, um, could have signed up twice, I'm not sure. Christine Ose. James Pringle. Ms. Ose.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the council, Madam County Exec. I'm glad to be here to support Dr. Moki. I've known him for more than 20 years and we've worked in different capacities. We both live in the county for the last 25 years and more, and I'm here to ask for your vote to approve him as the next Director of Department of Environment. It is not just his background, it is his character and the person that he is, that you will get a composite of a person who brings integrity, respect, and understanding of what it calls to run a Department of Environment in this county. I'm a retired county employee at the Park and Planning for 35, 36 years. I know what the importance of environment is, and I know when I see a person who's qualified to do the job. Thank you so much for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Pringle. Brittany Angel. Lee Bisong. Just identify yourself when you come up.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Moji Banjoko. I work for DOE. I've lived in Prince George's County for over three decades. Um, I've worked with the county for over two decades. I raised my family in this county, and my family-owned business is in, in Prince George's County. Prince George's County matters a lot to me, meaning I work for DOE and it matters to me what the leadership is. Sam is a great nominee, um, is a great leader, and I commend the county exec for the nomination. I'm coming from another perspective, not only that Sam is qualified, I'm a daughter of immigrants. My parents immigrated here from Nigeria. And I want to show my children that anything is possible, not because you're an immigrant, an immigrant that you cannot hold the leadership position. I, I raised them to go to school with all the qualification Dr. Sam has, that is how I raise my children. So I need the council, please, I want you to show my children that it is possible to rise as an immigrant or a descendant of an immigrant, that you can rise to leadership position.
Thank you.
Thank you. And please confirm Dr. Moki.
Thank you.
I'm too short. Let me this. It's still good, oh, no, it's good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much, county executive, brave boy, just the word brave, man speaks for yourself. Okay, um, I'm Diana Pringle, an immigrant from Philippines. I need to make a quick, um, you know, I already sent the emails to 11 council members, and this is what my email said. I am writing, but now I am here to express my full support to the nomination and eventual confirmation and of Dr. Sam Moki to be the next Director of the Department of the Environment. Okay? Dr. Moki, there is a journey 15 years ago. I'm not there, but I'm here when he have the short span of accomplishment in the Department of Environment, and that's what mattered to me. Okay, so if you want, oh, no, if you want council member to realize your mission ambition about environmental that you're going to put in DOE, please-
Madam?
Vote for Dr. Moki!
Madam?
Thank you!
Um, you have one minute, so you spend it how you want to spend it. So just start and then, just know, you have one minute.
Okay. Good afternoon, county council members. My name is Limunga Bisong, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my sister Ephesee, and my brother Ikomi, and we are Dr. Samuel Moki's children. It's an honor to speak about our dad. The same qualities that have shaped him as a father, discipline, humility, accountability, and compassion are the very attributes that define his leadership today. He has always believed that just as we are called to care for one another, we are also called to care for the environment that sustains us. He approaches people the same way he approaches the earth with stewardship. He cultivates potential, nurtures growth, and restores what's been overlooked. Where others see limitations, he sees opportunities. Where others step back, he steps forward. So when we see him during this confirmation, standing to become the Director of the Department of the Environment, we see more than an appointment. We see a testimony, a testimony of perseverance, service, and faith. The challenges he has faced has strengthened his roots, and today we witness the resilience and growth- The challenges he has faced has strengthened his roots, and today we witness the resilience and growth that will continue to guide our county to a sustainable future. We humbly ask the county council to confirm our dad as the Director of the Department of the Environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Blunt. Is Mayor Eugene Grant, former Mayor Eugene Grant. And then Dan Smith. Yes, sir.
To the venerable council and to Ayesha Brave Boy, she's gotten it right. She has absolutely gotten it right. I will not stand long, I don't have long, okay? However, though, his acumen, his resume, who he is, speaks for him by itself. I have known Sam for roughly 15 years. I am a neighbor, I can tell you the truth, Sam. He is everything good that people have just gotten up and said, both his leadership, his acumen, his results-focused agenda. I'm not impressed because I know who he is. If this council would do the people of Prince George's County like they are supposed to be done, he will indeed be confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. And before Mr. Smith speaks, if I can get all the colleagues who are in the building to come back, this is our last speaker. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dan Smith from Chevrolet. I elaborate on my opposition to the nomination at the committee hearing. What I'm noticing today, one of the outcomes of this controversial nomination is the elevation and the attention to the environment at the highest level of county government. This is long overdue. I agree with so much of what Dr. Moki has stated and pledged. These are critical matters. What I ask of you and the council is to share with us your commitments to the environment. How will you collaborate with this department and the administration? How will you hold this department accountable? It's a sorry state of affairs in the country today. Many of us feel we don't want to be here. We should be in the streets protesting ICE, fighting authoritarianism. You need to understand how important it is to us to have confidence in the operation of our county government. We need that stability so that we can fight the fight elsewhere. So please, help us to understand where we're going to be in six months from now with these issues. That's when the people will start voting in the primary.
All right, thank you very much. I believe I've called every name. And with that, this public hearing has concluded.
Mr. Chair, are you open to a motion?
Yes, I am.
I would like to move favorable on our confirmation of Sam Moki as our next Director of the Environment.
It's been properly moved by Councilmember Hawkins, seconded by Councilmember Harrison to second the appointment of Dr. Samuel Moki as our Department of the Environment Chair. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I, as Chair, I elect to vote last.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Thank you. I'd like to vote in favor of the nominee today, and I'd like to explain my position. So, Mr. Moki, as you likely know, we've heard from constituents across the county in favor and in opposition to this nomination. And I don't take this vote lightly, and preserving our environment means a lot to me. So as you know, I was just recently involved in a very public, public move to ensure that data centers don't go into residential communities because of the damage that they can cause to our environment. And so, my community has concerns about stormwater, about stormwater management, about rising utility bills, beautification, and the preservation of our natural resources, specifically in my district. And I'm also really wanting to see the county build out innovative, tech-savvy energy solutions. And so, you know, I'm providing my vote in favor with the understanding that there will be opportunities for my constituents and myself to ensure transparency from the agency and that you're going to take very, very intentional steps to move our county forward with the environment. So, thank you.
Ms. Blagay.
Thank you. I vote aye, and I do want to explain my vote. First of all, Dr. Moki, I just want to note, your story is the story of my family. That's the story of my father. Many of us who are immigrants coming into this country trying to do everything to show we're qualified, you have a law degree and two masters. We see this story everywhere. Many are in here because they have the same story. If you have the same story as Dr. Moki, please stand up. If you have the same story, please stand up. This is, this is our story, the story of an immigrant that comes here for change, to make a difference, and now he is going to be in a administration. Thank you, county executive, for believing in our community. You all have, can have a seat, but thank you so much. So people can see the support here. Thank you, county executive, for believing in an immigrant and putting someone like that in a high position. Many immigrant communities have been here. Many have also have not thought us, our communities, as part of the, as part of this Prince George's County community. But as they are immigrants, they are Prince George's, and you've brought him in, and we appreciate you believing in him. I just want to just state another reason, it's not just African background, it's not just the story, his story. But I just want to know that my experience with Dr. Moki, if I had to say who should be for gross negligence, the last administration, the Department of Environment, I reached out about stormwater in Largo, in Woodmore, in Upper Marlboro. I had so many issues, no resolutions, for years. Many of the community leaders that stood here opposing Moki, talking about a 2014, you know, case, and I understand where you're coming from, but the reality is that you are the same people that haven't gotten answers yourself on issues related to stormwater, related to the environment. I've heard from every one of you that came up here almost about concerns that you're not getting the answers. So now with Dr. Moki, within a month, I had answers. He had a presentation, he gave me ideas of ways he can fund the stormwater. So I'm not just voting for him because he is just, oh, he's an African immigrant. I'm supporting him because I have answers already for the community. I can go back, I have a commission, I had to even create to get solutions, and today, the agency is finally working with us to get the solution. So I do appreciate him. I do have a message for those that are talking about the data center. Just know, under the last administration, that was the fast-tracking that brought the data center to your community. It is this administration that paused it. So if you're asking, oh, we don't want to support this nomination because of his back, because of data centers, you got the wrong administration. This administration that Moki is serving right now is the one that paused the very data center that you brought to 20,000 signatures. I understand you have both the council and a, you know, a county executive with you, and you even have a council member that's going to hold accountable. I vote aye.
Mr. Denoga.
Dr. Moki will be confirmed in just a minute, and I congratulate him. And I spent more time considering this appointment than all the others combined. I have looked at the arguments on both sides, and I appreciate very much that Dr. Moki says he'll work with those citizens and groups that oppose his appointment. And I'm very hopeful that you will prove your opponents wrong. But after considering everything before me, I'm voting no.
Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, as I was listening to all the comments, and I was in TIE in the committee hearing, Dr. Moki, you know, democracy is hard. And so I do want to take like a second for everyone in this room. You know, actually voicing our opinions and being in a civil environment, thank you, Mr. Chair, and having high emotion is hard. You have a county exec that's sitting here, being disrespected, to me, that's listening to those that are for and against. There's someone in 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue that would just force something, that wouldn't go through a hearing process to get whatever, whatever they want. And so I want to appreciate the fact that in Prince George's County, democracy is alive and well, no matter what we are discussing. And I think when it comes to your appointment, Dr. Moki, I think Prince George's County is a place of not only first opportunity, but also second chances. And for me, you know, and I think about all the things that go into one's career. I think about my own career. I think about the ups and downs, and I think about the future ahead, and I think that with everything I've heard, you deserve a chance to chart your future. It's clear that all eyes are going to be on the Department of Environment. And I think that your willingness to continue that challenge, even in the face of adversity, I have to be not only humbled myself, but I know that you're going to work 10 times harder probably than any other director we're going to have. I do want to say that for me, I appreciate and want to talk about just two things as I wrap up my comments. You know, in District Two, I've gotten a ton of emails, and for my residents, I will respond to all your emails on this appointment. It's taken me some time. You know, our environmental concerns, as you mentioned, are big. I have a large immigrant population, I have a lot of, I have a, County Executive took a tour, I have a lot of trash, I have a lot of issues. Let me say this, I was just getting tired. In the last administration, I asked time and time again for education, physical education, not just printing something out, and I'm going to wrap up, in Spanish and in English, to help our community when it comes to adjusting to what we need to make our environment and our trash contractors and everything work. I know from you that you've made that commitment to my district, and I'm excited for that. The other thing that I do want to talk about is that the climate crisis facing Prince Georgians, when it comes to the safety of Prince Georgians, it's probably one of the biggest things that are going to impact every single person in this room. And I know that you understand that, and I, with our conversation, I know that you're going to be laser-focused, not just on the environmental concerns that we're facing in a day from now, but 30 years from now. Because I hope to be a council member coming, a former council member coming back and actually having a county to come back to that's not flooded, and you know, the things that we see across the country. So I know that you'll work on these things. I appreciate you, and I do appreciate everyone that testified, that emailed me in opposition with your concerns. I will continue to take those in as we work together. But I also want people that the same, those of us that have concerns, I'll tell you, every council member up here, there's a work group, there's a commission. There's so much work that goes into change and not just screaming about it or saying it. There are people, there are advocates every day that actually do work with the council all the time to improve our community, and it's not just at a hearing. So I want all of that, all of you to know that we're in opposition or have concerns, there's going to be plenty of opportunities because I want to see everyone roll up their sleeves and build a better Prince George's. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First and foremost, I want to thank all the speakers who signed up today to speak and testify, to be a part of our democracy, to ensuring that your voices were heard. I want to thank the nominee and his family for being present. I want to thank the county executive for submitting this nominee, Dr. Moki, to the Prince George's County Council. Now, I want to be a participant in the beauty of our democracy. I've listened, I've heard. And one of the things I noticed was, there was a comment made that this is Gotham City. No, this is Prince George's County. It is Prince George's County, not Gotham City. I don't take any of this as some joke or some caricature or some sort of storytelling. I look for facts and I look for truth. And in doing so, I want to apologize to the county executive for the micro and macro aggressions that I've been witnessing, not only in the tie committee hearing, but then evident today. Nobody should have to go through these micro and macro aggressions when we're all participants in the beauty of our democracy. We can be civil, and we can be respectable. We can be honest, and we can debate with respectability. So I want to owe you an apology, Madam County Executive. Second of all, I want to talk about how this process that I deemed, that I saw was of someone being vilified and demonized. Then we should be trying to humanize the moment where we face the challenges that we face together through the Department of Environment. That all of us are a part in that process to meet the challenges because us just talking is not solving it. Dr. Moki, you sat down with me, you talked about environmental innovation, you talked about stormwater management, you talked about the solid waste fund, you talked about the repurposing of the landfill, you talked about capturing methane gas so we can profit in this county to bring more resources in to our general fund budget. You talked about leadership. And so I want to apologize to you for the way you've been treated through this process. While it's been murky and it's not been fair, and at times, it's been ugly, but that's the beauty of our democracy. I want a leader that's not going to fold under pressure, that can stand tall and can deal with the $250 million over the next five years worth of stormwater management. I need some answers to that, and this body is committed to solving that. These are problems that already existed way before you showed up. And so, I proudly vote aye for you. I've had a chance to meet you and meet your family. I'm glad that we had the opportunity to humanize the situation in the Department of Environment. Encourage everyone in this room to take a solemn vow and promise to uplifting the Department of Environment. That's what this is here, that's what we're here for. And Madam County Executive, once again, I am apologizing for the micro and macro aggressions that we experienced in this room today. You do not deserve to be pointed at, sized up, or taunted. It's unacceptable behavior.
Mr. Hawkins.
Doctor, you are the only nominee for the six years that I've been on this council that have come before me for confirmation or rejection that I'm standing up for to say, Madam Clerk, I vote aye, meaning yes, for this nominee. Don't need to say anything else because it's all been said. Brother, I stand for you in what you represent. And for anyone that have issue with my position, as you all know, I'm open to discussing with you. But the county exec made the right choice, the right decision for this assignment. And brother, go forward and do well, and just know, our county depends on your leadership when it comes to the Department of Environment. Do well, my brother, do well.
Mr. Olson.
Thank you, I vote no. With that said, I know that the nominee will be confirmed, and Dr. Moki, I know I will see you this Thursday in TIEE, and we have a lot of work to do. And, and I will work with you, and because we have too much to do. I respect your, your journey, and there's a lot that we can do together. And, you know, this is, this is democracy, as people have said, it should be civil, as Mr. Harrison said, and we will move forward. Thank you.
Vice Chair Urieta.
Thank you. I want to thank you for just your steadfast leadership throughout this process. I know it's one that is difficult. It's, it's, you know, when we run for office, we're used to being on the chopping block for, you know, months at a time, and people saying all kinds of things about us and, and posting. I know sometimes when you step into these positions, it's different than running for office, so sometimes yourself and your family are not prepared for the same level of scrutiny that this one, this position might call for. So I just, one, want to commend you for your. So I just, one, want to commend you for your ability to stay through it and to be open to talking and meeting with every council member here. And I know just meeting with people that spoke in opposition of you, I know that you've spoken to those individuals, and I think that is a testament to who you're going to be in this position. I said this in committee, and I just have to reiterate it again. I'm just disappointed with some things. I'm disappointed because there's like, I guess there's some assumptions that there's like, one nominee put forth, so there was no consideration. Just so people know, when the county executive and the administration goes through a search, they meet and vet and speak with multiple people when they're making a decision. It is customary, only one name comes to us. So that wasn't like, for this particular case, they submitted one name. And always, they submit three and four for us to choose from. That is just not the process. It's nothing new. It is the way it's done. So I just want to make sure that we're clear about this transparency. It has always been the process. So it's not something that this county executive did differently. And you know, also have concerns with what my colleague mentioned about tying this to an idea that the data centers are going to now be fast-tracked, and this is us going in the opposite direction of what we've clearly stated. So I just want to reiterate again that the legislation that passed before myself and many of my colleagues that sit on this dais, that fast-tracked the data centers was not under our leadership or the county executive's leadership. What happened to stop what was happening behind closed doors that none of us were aware of was based on this county executive's leadership and our leadership. And so us moving forward with an appointee aligns with that leadership. And the reality is that I know some people that didn't come here to testify today, and I'll say it again, that are intentionally spreading misinformation. Adam Ortiz and Director Croomes, who wanted this job. And it's really disingenuous to intentionally work to destroy a man's reputation, especially for Adam Ortiz, who was the actual director, who actually got those fines, fines doubled under his leadership. He was allowed to keep his position. No one's talking about how, at that exact same time, Montgomery County, Anarundo County, across multiple jurisdictions, were under the exact same scrutiny. Those individuals weren't terminated. So if we're going to talk about the facts, we all need to educate ourselves about what's really going on and look deeper. Because the reality is, we paid more when this man was not working for the DOE. That's a fact. The person that was in leadership the entire time never was held accountable. That is also a fact. It was a fact that neighboring jurisdictions had the same issues and concerns, also a fact. But it's laid at someone's feet because you want the job, and then you become a puppet master behind the scenes, rallying up advocates, telling them half truths because of what they know most electors won't do, and it's call you out by name. But I am not that one. If you continue to lie behind scenes and tarnish people's names, and I know about it, I will always call you by name on this dais and hold you accountable. And I vote aye.
Ms. Watson?
Now, how can I follow that, Madam Vice Chair? My colleagues have said it all. Dr. Moki, I had a chance to speak with you. I had many questions, based on, you know, some of the things that I was hearing and from the opposition. I wanted to, you know, get the record set straight. I also did my due diligence and found some of the information that Vice Chair Oriada is saying is true. So, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and I know you know that. But I think you're the right man for the job, and I feel like our partnership is going to be very strong with all of us because we know what the issues are and we know what we're dealing with. And I just appreciate all you've done so far in getting that work done. I appreciate, Madam County Executive. So I'm pleased to vote aye.
Chair Burrows?
Did you already record Councilmember Fisher's vote? I know she gave her statement, but I think there was a-
Yeah, there was some confusion in my whole statement. I voted aye, so I just wanted to say, I voted aye in my statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm happy to vote aye as well. There are a couple points that I want to address, but I think my colleagues have addressed most of them at this point. I want to talk about transparency, number one. Under the charter of Prince George's County, under the code, under the laws, there is actually no requirement for this nominee, or any nominee, to go before a committee. And when this nominee in particular came up, I called the county executive. I said, Madam County Executive, I've met with our lawyers. This does not have to see committee. And this county executive said, I want him to go through the committee. I want to be as transparent as possible. I know that there is no legal obligation for you to sit before a committee, a committee that I wasn't sure what would happen in. But this county executive said, no, I want him to. As I looked at the rules again, by charter, you must have a public hearing, but there is no requirement for me as chair to call for the vote. I once again went to our county executive and said, Madam County Executive, as I look at the rules, we can have this public hearing without a vote. This county executive, in the spirit of transparency, said, I want to vote. Before this started, this hearing started, I walked over to the county executive. I said, Madam County Executive, there's a TV in the back room. There are over 45 speakers who have signed up. I would like you to go back there and watch it because I'm not sure what's going to happen here. The county executive told me, I'm going to sit here and hear every comment out in the open, and someone put their hand in her face, which, you know, which, which we could have handled a certain kind of way, but the county executive didn't give me that indication that she wanted anything done. So she sat here and listened to it. So all of this talk about not being transparent is flat out on its face incorrect. This county executive has been above and beyond. In fact, I know for sure that the appointments liaison emailed every council member and agreed to walk through every past action that occurred in 2014. Agreed to have your lawyer from 2014 come in and meet with every member. So this has been the opposite of not transparent. This has been extremely transparent on the dais and behind the scenes, and I want the public to know that. The notion that the county executive, when she was state's attorney, somehow upheld a personnel board decision, that on its face tells me that there is a misunderstanding of duties, responsibilities, and laws. That is not the way this works. Personnel decisions of this nature are not going before the county executive when she's state's attorney. But the fact that these narratives are being repeated goes to the vice chair's point about people intentionally spreading false information. And I'm okay with people voting their conscience. I'm okay with people agreeing and disagreeing. The thing that bothers me the most is when people with knowledge feed lies to people who don't know. And then we're set up, you know, and we have to sit up here and listen and not respond because the moment, you know. So that's one thing I want to say. I want to talk about flooding and storm water management. And I've gotten some emails from folks specific to this. In Fort Washington, we have severe flooding issues. I literally had a constituent chain himself to a tree to protest the tearing down of a forest, and the county executive was there as state's attorney because, you know, he got arrested and all those things. My district could not even receive a phone call. Let me just scoot over so you can see me, Dr. Moki. Could not receive a phone call. You want to talk about the destruction of black wealth in Fort Washington? What happens when this excessive flooding destroys entire communities? I couldn't even get a phone call back from the last administration. And to know that we have a county executive in the Department of the Environment who gives a damn about South County, who will show up for South County, who would put resources in South County where they had not been put in South County before, I vote for you without hesitation. And so you want to bring up, certain people want to bring up a record in 2014. And I think Councilmember Blague, Councilmember Oriada, mentioned this already. I have residents right now in my district whose homes are impacted every time it rains with no support from this government, until Ayesha Brave Boy came in, until you came in. And so, I lost my notes, but I just want to say, I'm happy to vote for you. Madam County Executive, you've been nothing but overly transparent. I have never seen a county executive sit in this chamber for the amount of time that you have to defend your nominees. This did not have to go to committee. You made sure it went to committee. This did not have to have a vote today. You made sure it had a vote today, and I'm happy that it had a vote today because what this body has shown by a supermajority, a supermajority of members analyzed every speaker's comments, a supermajority of members analyzed the record before we walked into the room, a supermajority of the members reviewed the personnel board statements, documents, met with you, and we found a lot of that stuff to be baseless. And I'm, look forward to working with you. I look forward to working with you, Madam County Executive. And with that, this motion carries by a supermajority. No, you cannot clap, Ms. Blague. Now, if clapping, if clapping is allowed, just know, I have to allow booing to be allowed. So let's just agree to be quiet. Next, we will have Dr. Gomez, at the request of Senator Charles, who has a meeting. Is that right? Appointment 1225, appointment of the following individual as Director of Homeland Security, Dr. Gomez. We will turn to Councilmember Blague for a committee report.
Council Human Service and Public Safety Committee met on October 2nd to consider Dr. Katina Gomez's nomination as Director of the Office of Homeland Security. Ms. Danielle Hunter from the Office of the County Executive introduced the nominee and provided an overview of Dr. Gomez's professional and educational background. Ms. Melanie Batten-Mickens, Deputy Director, spoke in support of Dr. Gomez, highlighting her collaborative style, quick action since joining the department, and her focus on community preparedness, workforce development, and student opportunities through the pathway-
Please be quiet as you exit the chamber.
Dr. Gomez addressed the committee, expressed gratitude for the opportunity to serve. She outlined recent accomplishments during her time as Acting Director, including launching the pathways programs in partnership with local high schools, organizing a county-wide preparedness exercise, updating equipment at emergency operations center, reducing staffing vacancies in public safety communications, and strengthening partnerships across county agencies. She also shared goals such as expanding residency enrollment in emergency alert systems and improving pay for 911 dispatchers. Following the discussion, Chair Blague made a motion to move favorably, seconded by Councilmember Fisher. The Health and Human Service and Public Safety Committee voted favorably 5-0 on the nomination of Dr. Katina Gomez as Director of Homeland Security.
Thank you, Madam County Executive, your nominee.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair and distinguished members of the Prince George's County Council. It is my honor and pleasure to submit for your consideration the appointment of Dr. Katina Gomez as the Director of Homeland Security for Prince George's County. Now, this, this particular department is very special to me because years ago, and I know Councilmember Dugaga may remember this, years ago, when I was the council liaison, one of the bills that I brought before the council was a bill to establish the Department of Homeland Security. So it is an honor and privilege to now come full circle to nominate a leader of that agency. Dr. Gomez is a proven and respected leader who brings more than 20 years of distinguished service in law enforcement with an impeccable record of leadership, operational excellence, and community engagement. She represents the very best of public service and exemplifies the caliber of leadership we need to guide this vital department. Dr. Gomez brings a powerful combination of field experience, strategic vision, and academic excellence. She was currently, she currently, well, she previously served as the Deputy Chief for the Bureau of Homeland Security within the Prince George's County Police Department. And that's where I really got to know her as a person, but also as a community member. She's someone who grew up here. And I remembered walking with her in the Sutland area as we were addressing the issue of the proliferation of 24/7 convenience centers in neighborhoods that were causing lots of issues and problems. She was walking with the residents, and a car pulled up, and someone said, is that Katina? She knows this community, and the community knows her. But what she has done is that instead of just focusing on her career, she also focused on advancement, and that's why we call her Dr. Gomez. So she is highly skilled, highly professional. She's deeply rooted in community service. She's an active member of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, Major Cities Chiefs Association, and the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. She's also a proud member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Continuing her lifelong commitment to service, sisterhood, and excellence is my pleasure and honor to nominate Dr. Katina Gomez.
Remarks from the nominee.
Well, good afternoon. Councilmember Chair, Council Chair, Vice Chair, and the council, thank you for your opportunity to be here today. I want to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to Madam County Executive, Ayesha Brave Boy, for entrusting me with the opportunity to continuing my service here at Prince George's County in this new capacity as the Director of Office of Homeland Security. You'll be hearing from Senator Nick Charles in a few, but I want to thank him for taking the time to come and speak on my behalf. It means a lot to me. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank God, who continues to order my steps every day, to my mom, my daughters, Zee and Zoe, my sister Daisy Marie, my family, and my closest friends. Your encouragement means everything to me. I would love to sit here and acknowledge each and every one of them, but I can't because we'll probably be here until Christmas. I'm truly honored to stand before you today, continuing to serve the residents of Prince George's County, that place that shaped me. As a young girl, I grew up here in Prince George's County in Sutland and Forestville mostly. My roots here are deep. I found my love for public safety at just 10 years old as a safety patrol at Berkshire Elementary School, helping classmates crawl safely and realizing what it meant to protect others. In that moment, a seed was planted that will one day grow into my career. I attended Berkshire Elementary School, Andrew Jackson Middle School, Saratsville High School. However, I proudly graduated from Forestville High School before it became the Military Academy. I attended the University of Maryland Eastern Shore and graduated with honors with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice. My career goal was to be a defense attorney, to speak up for those who couldn't speak for themselves. But God had a different plan for me. Just one year after graduation, I joined the Prince George's County Police Department, where I served for more than two decades, rising through the ranks to ultimately retire as the highest ranking female officer on the department. That's a distinction I carry with deep pride, not for the title itself, but for what it represents, the power of persistence, service, and the belief that zip codes don't define destiny. That journey wasn't about a career. It was about serving my community, the same neighborhoods I grew up in, the same families who shaped me, and the same people I once stood beside on those sidewalks in Sutland. Growing up in Prince George's County taught me that zip codes don't define your destiny, character, community, and commitment do. The adults in my life, my teachers, coaches, mentors, and neighbors poured into me. They set the foundation that made it possible for a young girl from 20746 to one day sit at the table of leadership in this great county. from 20746 to one day sit at the table of leadership in this great county. So when I say I work, worship, and serve here, it's not just a statement. It's my life story. This county raised me, supported me, and believed in me long before I ever wore a uniform. And again, I've said I work, worship, and serve here, and now I get to pour that same dedication back into the community that built the woman standing before you today. That's why stepping into this role as a Director of Homeland Security feels like a continuation of the same mission. I protected our county in uniform for years. Now I have the privilege of protecting it in a different capacity. Homeland Security at its core is about exactly that, protecting the homeland. And for me, that homeland will always be Prince George's County. If you all will indulge me for just a moment, since stepping into this role, I have focused on strengthening our preparedness, renovating our systems, and investing in the people who make public safety possible. I would like to just give a few examples of my accomplishments thus far. We're currently in the process of conducting a countywide Emergency Operations Center Preparedness Exercise, which will be on October the 29th. You all should have seen, received your emails. This is where multiple agencies will come together to simulate an emergency and practice coordinated response efforts. We've also upgraded and renewed equipment in the Emergency Operations Center to ensure operations remain efficient and reliable under any circumstance. In Public Safety Communications, we've made real progress in staffing. Vacancies for 911 specialists have been reduced tremendously. And this is before we even implemented a recruiting campaign. Lastly, the launch of the Pathway Internship Program, in which students are trained as 911 specialists, earning certificates that will allow them to step directly into careers in emergency communications after graduation. I know prior to having this title, the word interim was in front of the, uh, the title, but I can assure you all that there has been nothing interim about my work or my desire to serve. Looking ahead, I have a few priorities. First, increasing the pay for our 911 call takers and dispatchers. They are the lifeline between our residents and emergency services, and we must stay competitive to retain and attract top talent. Second, expanding community outreach so more students are prepared for emergencies and sign up for electronic alerts. My goal is to have more than half of our county registered to stay informed and safe during severe weather or other emergencies. And finally, continuing strong regional collaboration to ensure we have the resources and fundings to support our emergency operations and personnel. In closing, I want to thank the County Council for your ongoing partnership. The work we do in Homeland Security is vital, but it's also collaborative. None of it can happen without collaboration. Together, we are strengthening our readiness, improving our communication, and ensuring that Prince George's County remains one of the safest and most resilient counties in the state. It is truly an honor to continue serving the community that raised me from the sidewalks of Sutland to this chamber today. I look forward to working alongside each of you as we protect, prepare, and elevate Prince George's County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then we will have speakers. Uh, we'll start with Senator from the 25th Legislative District, Nick Charles.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much for indulging me with making this happen. Uh, we have some, uh, M.D.A.T. that's over on Sutland Parkway dealing with the exchange. So we're doing a site visit, so I need to head there right after this. But to all of the council members, thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I want to tell you something about this dynamic local hero and a leader. At 11 years old, my family switched churches and joined Freedom Way Missionary Baptist Church on Benin Road in Capitol Heights under the leadership of Reverend George Allen Fistro. That's where I met back then a young Katina Batte, before the titles and before the accolades. And at this church, it taught us a little bit about duty and service at young ages. Both of our mothers, and it's good to see our mother back there, were missionaries who were feeding the homeless and helping families in need. And that's what we learned, a lot of the work ethic that we have. Because service wasn't a choice, it was a calling. Then at 15, Katina started working together at The Wendy's on Don Hill Drive. That's the one across Forestville Mall. That's how far we go back. And there, we learned customer service, teamwork, and patience. And those are some of the things that she is truly exemplifying today. Fast forward 22 years after that, when I was serving in the Maryland House of Delegates as Chair of our County House Delegation, then Major Katina Gomez was serving as the District Eight Commander, still serving the same community that raised us. Today, the Prince George's County Office of Homeland Security safeguards our entire county, coordinating 911 operations, emergency management, and threat prevention. It is responsible for protecting our critical infrastructure, managing our Emergency Operations Center during disasters, and ensuring inter-agency coordination with federal and state partners against terrorist, cyber, and natural threats. To lead that mission, you need someone who has done the work, not read about the work. And Dr. Katina Gomez has served our county for over 20 years in law enforcement, rising from patrol officer to Deputy Chief of Bureau of Homeland Security. She holds a Doctor of Management and Organizational Leadership, is a graduate of FBI National Academy and Senior Management Institute for Police, and has earned commendations for integrity and innovation. She has commanded divisions that handle domestic violence, child abuse, and special crimes, built school emergency plans to protect our students, and manage multimillion-dollar budgets in countywide response operations. No one is more qualified or prepared to protect Prince George's County with modern threats than Dr. Katina Gomez, a daughter of this county and a true servant leader. Thank you all for your consideration, and I truly urge you to support her confirmation. Thank you.
Diana Pringle. Uh, this concludes our public hearing.
Motion to, motion to confirm.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Fisher, seconded by Councilmember Blague to confirm. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Uh, I vote aye, and congratulations. You've already been doing a fantastic job. Uh, I love everything you're doing. I love your team. You know, you stole Chief Reese out of Forest Heights, but, uh, you two together make a perfect team, and I'm happy to vote yes.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
I vote aye, and I look forward to working with you.
Ms. Blague.
I vote aye, and I just want to know, you know, a lot of people just shows your commitment to the community. You reminded me that our real first-time meeting was at Slurpee Day at the, at the, um, at the 7-Eleven off of Marlboro Pike. And that just goes to show, it wasn't at a gala or anything fancy. It was right in the community, where we were sitting there in the hot sun with the big slurpee work running around us, waiting, um, for residents to come out and greet us. So that just shows your commitment, and you're doing that while you are, you know, doctor and, and have all these degrees. So thank you, Madam County Executive, for bringing such qualified people. Because you can be qualified, you can have all of the degrees in the world, but what matters is that you're on the ground. For our community reaches you. And if you can hang out a slurpee day, um, it shows someone that's truly committed and that everyone, that you're, that you're available to everyone from the top to the bottom. So we appreciate you.
Mr. Dunogga.
I'm happy to vote aye. I was very impressed during our meeting, so, uh, really appreciate it.
Ms. Fisher.
Okay, now I'm going to make sure I'm clear each time. I vote aye. And explaining, uh, my vote, um, Dr. Gomez, I've had the joy of getting to know you for years. And the two things I want to say is, you don't forget where you come from. And I know that in this new role, you're not going to forget, and you're going to be about our community in every emergency management situation. I know Councilmember Burrows is not going to be shoveling snow this winter like he was last winter, um, that you're going to make sure in all things. Because it sounds funny, but we had seniors that couldn't get medical services. We had, um, folks that couldn't get necessarily medications delivered. You know, something like snow can cause death, right? And I know you know that. And you're going to make sure, um, that our community is safe. And then the other thing I just wanted to say is, you know, um, there are not many women, um, in your role. For you and, um, our fire, our future, I think we did a confirmation for Fire Chief Michael Edes is coming up. You two are going to be a pillar and a real statement. And it speaks to the county executive's leadership, um, to put women, um, in these roles, especially in the sectors of public safety where sometimes you're alone. And you might be the only person, um, the only woman in your, or a woman or black woman in your role in the DMV. Because you and, and all of our public safety trees, chiefs, so people don't talk about, that we at the council get to see, is how much work you have to do with other jurisdictions, um, and the council of governments, and especially during an emergency and working together. So just know that when you are in those rooms sometimes, and you might be by yourself, that the county council is behind you, that your county is behind you, um, and that we're proud of you. So I'm proud to vote aye.
Mr. Harrison.
Thank you. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank Dr. Gomez for considering this leadership role. I vote aye. In explaining my vote, I just think it is with profound joy that we're seeing all these individuals in leadership from the Prince George's County Public School System. Madam County Executive, are we Largo High School, Largo? Right? Forestville, you know? And then the chair is Crossland, and Chief Nader is Saratsville. And so, um, I know you've been out doing the work for many, many years. Uh, I learned something new about you today, though, and I probably should have read a little bit more. But, uh, your, your heart for missionary work, uh, that speaks closely to my heart. And anyone that, that does missionary work, they really have a love, genuine love for people. And so, I proudly vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Oh, you got this special stuff. Madam Clerk, I vote aye. And Director Gomez, thank you for your service. As when we talk, you know my first love is Homeland Security and Emergency Management. You have Director Reese working with you. Just go ahead and do what you've been prepared for this moment. You've been prepared for this moment, so go do what you do. And County Exec, you keep sending all these all-stars in front of you. Prince George's County, watch out, here we come. Thank you.
Mr. Olson.
Uh, thank you. I vote aye, and I want to thank County Executive Brave Boy for the appointment. Um, Dr. Gomez, I remember from District One, uh, where she did terrific work, uh, there. And, uh, it's, it's a pleasure to be working with you again in this capacity. So, um, thank you. I vote aye.
Vice Chair Oriada.
I vote aye, and I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I think this is just another great choice by our county executive. I look forward to your leadership, uh, our partnership, and the work that we can do in District Seven. And just thank you for your openness, your humility, and the energy that you bring to the position.
Ms. Watson.
Uh, I vote aye, and proudly, um, in explaining my vote, Dr. Gomez, I look forward to working with you and look forward to the partnership that we'll have. And, and just want to say thank you for all that you've done so far and look forward to the great work that you will continue to do. So thank you, proud to vote aye.
Motion carries 10-0.
Thank you. Uh, at the request of Sigma Gamma Rho, Madam C.A.O., you're next.
Polycatheters.
All right, all right. Everywhere y'all go, it's a song, a dance, flowers, gifts. All right. And congratulations, Dr. Gomez. I'll see, and we'll celebrate later. Uh, Appointment 825, appointment of the following individual as Chief Administrative Officer for Prince George's County, Ms. Maxine Bardwell. I'll turn over, turn it over to Councilmember Watson for a committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prince George's County Council's Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee convened on September 11th, 2025 to consider Ms. Maxine Bardwell's appointment as the Chief Administrative Officer for Prince George's County. The Chief Administrative Officer exercises general supervision over the agencies of the executive branch as the county executive may direct. Ms. Danielle Hunter, the county executive's appointments liaison, introduced Acting Chief Administrator Officer Bardwell. After discussion, the Prince George's County Council's Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee reported favorably on Ms. Maxine Bardwell's appointment as the county chief's administrative officer, 5 to 0. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam County Executive, your nominee.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Is it okay if I just ask, um, the members of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated to just come and stand behind me?
Sure.
Thank you. And if there are other members who are in overflow rooms, come on down. There, there's some room, uh, down here in, uh, the council hearing room on the first floor for you. So if you're out there in another overflow room, you're a member of Sigma Gamma Rho, come on down. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the county council. It is my great honor to submit for your consideration the appointment of Ms. Maxine Bardwell as Chief Administrative Officer for the Office of the County Executive for Prince George's County. I am genuinely excited about this appointment because I have seen firsthand the professionalism, leadership, and integrity that Ms. Bardwell brings to every role she undertakes. With more than 25 years of experience in internal auditing, I'm not sure how she does that, financial services, and government, she has built a career grounded in excellence, accountability, and ethical leadership. The same values guide our administration and this government. Ms. Bardwell is a proud graduate of Notre Dame of Maryland and the, the Ohio State University, and she is also a proud member of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated. She currently serves as the Chair of the Maryland Association of Certified Public Accountants, a member of AICPA Council, and the immediate past president of, uh, I, is it I-SACA? Okay, there's all these acronyms out here, I-SACA. She also serves on the Board of the Association of Inspector Generals and advises the Washington Area Women's Foundation and mentors rising CPAs. Her outstanding leadership has earned national, earned her national recognition, including the 2021 AICPA Outstanding CPA in Local Government Impact Award, a reflection of her dedication and excellence in public service. Ms. Bardwell's professional credentials are among the most extensive, extensive, excuse me, I have seen. She holds certifications as a Certified Public Accountant, Internal Auditor, Fraud Examiner, Inspector General, Information Systems Auditor, Information Technology Professional, and Risk Management Assurance Specialist. Okay. For more than 20 years, uh, Ms. Bardwell has called Prince George's County home. She understands our community, our priorities, and the importance of building a government that serves with integrity, efficiency, and compassionate, and compassion. I am so confident in this nominee, and I ask that the council confirm her. Thank you very much.
Madam Exec, uh, there's been a complaint from Alpha Kappa Alpha. Uh, Councilmember Watson.
My apologies.
Councilmember Watson.
Let all of the, uh, members of the Divine Nine know that we love everyone and we thank you. You are all our sisters.
Dr. Gomez is an AKA, and her sisters would have liked to have stood with her. We try to have fairness in the chamber. Ms. Bardwell, I'll turn it over to you for comments. Oh, Ms. Gomez, we were just talking about you. Your AKA sisters wanted to stand with you. Yeah. So later, I got you. There you go. It's hard to be first.
Okay, we holding up signs now? Okay. Distinguished members of the council, chairs, friends, and guests, good afternoon. Chairman Burrows, Vice Chair Oriada, Councilman Dunogga, who represents, uh, District One, where I reside, and all esteemed members of the council, please indulge me for a moment to savor the profound significance of this occasion and to express my sincere gratitude. To stand before this council today is one of the most humbling moments of my To stand before this council today is one of the most humbling moments of my professional life. I look out and see not just distinguished officials, but the faces of people who have cultivated my career and reinforced my conviction to serve. And to Madam County Executive, Ayesha Brave Boy, please allow me a special moment of recognition. My utmost respect, deep admiration, and sincerest gratitude goes to you. Thank you for your unwavering trust and belief in me, and for granting me the profound honor of serving alongside you as we work tirelessly to elevate this great county. I also wish to formally acknowledge my esteemed colleagues and the talented leaders who have come before you and who are awaiting their own confirmation today. It has been a distinct privilege to collaborate directly with each of you during my tenure as Acting Chief Administrative Officer. To my speakers you will hear from today, I don't want to tell you who they are, I want you to be surprised, your kind words and testimonies will profoundly affirm my character. Your belief in me is a powerful and humbling gift. I also want to acknowledge CEO for WSSC Water, Keisha Powell, for being here today, as well as Major Riddick, who was not in the room when you offered his accolades earlier. When asked how I am faring, my singular highest level response remains one word, and that is thankful. My foremost thanks is reserved for Almighty God, for the grace, the spiritual guidance, and His extraordinary opportunity to serve the residents of Prince George's County, Maryland. I am thankful beyond measure for my family, my father and mother who gave me life, and whose perseverance paved this path. Many thanks to my sister Valerie, who is here today. Hi, Val. Every friend, colleague, and soror who has filled this room with unwavering support. My mother, my constant anchor and greatest inspiration is present today, and I would like her to stand. Her name is Vandela Bates. Let's see, I lost my place, because I got, okay, okay, let's see. The late, great Chadwick Boseman provided powerful counsel when he said, "When God has something for you, it doesn't matter who stands against it." I am profoundly grateful that County Executive Ayesha Brave Boy was the leader who recognized that calling, who extended that trust, and who opened this door for me to serve as her partner, the second-in-command of this great county. My dedication is rooted not merely in professional experience, but in deeply, a deeply personal history. I am a proud Caribbean-American. No clapping. Born in Hartford, Connecticut. My 95-year-old father is in Connecticut, he couldn't be here with us today, but he is a Jamaican immigrant, whose difficult path to America included a deportation just before my birth. My mother, who was working as a domestic worker, had an employer whose advocacy ultimately helped bring him back to the United States. This is a personal reminder that complex immigration laws touch, shape, and challenge families in every corner of our community. While neither of my parents completed their formal high school education, they instilled in me an even greater inheritance, the fierce expectation that I must strive for more than they could imagine. As a third born, I became the first in my family to graduate high school, and the only one to earn a college degree. Being a trailblazer meant mastering many disciplines, from navigating college campuses, to understanding business politics, to operating in boardrooms where I often find myself the sole female person of color. Yet, I was never truly alone. I always had the spiritual support of my faith, and the generous mentors, coaches, and sponsors that God placed in my life. My history is my humility. My family and I understand the weight of struggle and the power of overcoming adversity through God's grace and hard work. I have a deeply vested interest in the success of the county, where I have made my home for the last 25 years, an interest reinforced by my partnership with Bridgeway Community Church, where we actively invest in the welfare of those we serve. For me, service is guided by Colossians 3:23, "Whatever you do, work heartily as for the Lord and not man." In the past 100 days as Acting Chief Administrative Officer, I have worked alongside County Executive Ayesha Brave Boy to main a relentless focus. I have stood at her side as we have executed and are continuing to implement operational and administrative improvements designed to elevate the standards of Prince George's County. It is through the exceptional teamwork and commitment of our deputy CAOs, directors, and the employees who make up their respective clusters that we are driving this progress. Their continued support has been indispensable in enabling me to spearhead the creation of a clear vision, mission, and core values for the Brave Boy administration, because as we know, Proverbs 29:18 states, "Without a vision, the people perish." As a Certified Public Accountant, I am naturally inclined to ground my commitment to objective figures. I reside in District One. Hi, Councilman Dornoga, you weren't here earlier. I represent the 2% of Black CPAs in the United States. And after your confirmation, I will proudly serve as the number two, working for the number one county executive, for the benefit of the people of Prince George's County. My sorority recognized my drive, thank you sorors, by bestowing upon me the line name "Master of Challenge." I know that I am called to serve in this essential role for a time such as this. I embrace that challenge and the profound responsibility that comes with it. Thank you again, members of the county council, for granting me this opportunity. I humbly ask for your vote of approval to officially become the Chief Administrative Officer and continue my dedication to the nearly 1 million residents of Prince George's County.
Thank you. We'll start with the speakers list. Is Mayor Keith sitting over here?
Yes, I am.
He was such a great mentor in the 100 Black Men. Thank you for being here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to stand before you today, to speak on behalf of Maxine Bardwell, to be confirmed as Prince George's County Chief Administrative Officer. It's a proud day for Maxine, but also a proud day for all Prince George's County people. Maxine's appointment reflects her values, we hold dear, integrity, accountability, and service to others. Her leadership has been more than marked by her excellence, discipline, and steadfast commitment to transparency and good governance. As a fellow public servant, I know how vital it is to have leaders who have served with heart and head. Maxine has demonstrated that balance throughout her career, from work as an auditor, ensuring ethical oversight, her community service on the City of Laura Ethics Commission, where she helps strengthen trust in local government. Her reputation for professionalism and fairness precedes her. She earned the respect of her peers, not just through her credentials, but through her character. And County Executive Ayesha Brave Boy cannot have more, excuse me, have not more right in recognizing Maxine's leadership and commitment to public service. Both of these extraordinary women represent excellence through vision and continue Prince George's County to move forward. On behalf of the City of Laura, I send my heartfelt support to Maxine Bardwell. We're proud of you, you're a proud example, proudly know you, and I wish the county council to confirm Maxine Bardwell as Chief Administrative Officer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Isabel Mercedes Cummings, and I am the Inspector General of Baltimore City. It is a true honor to stand before you today, to introduce and talk about someone who is a consummate professional, a woman of integrity, and soon hopefully to be your incoming Chief Administrative Officer. When Maxine reached out to me with this invitation, I was both humbled and touched. She reminds me of something that we share, that goes beyond titles and accomplishments. We share the experience of being women of color. My entire name is Isabelita Magdalita Mercedes Cummings de Yoveras. I was the head of Police Misconduct and Economic Crimes here in Prince George's County for seven years, under Glenn Ivey. At that point, we considered it the star department of the state's attorney's office. We know what it means, though, to lead with excellence while quietly breaking major barriers. And discovering this connection that we both served here in Prince George's County, and I know that Maxine Bardwell will do an outstanding job, and will represent the people well with her integrity. And on behalf of, I was the first-place president of the Association of Inspector Generals, and she served as our treasurer, and she was truly one of the best. So, I highly recommend you to accept your nomination. Thank you.
Twanda Livingston?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, County Council, Honorable Brave Boy, and the attendees from the great Prince George's County. My name is Twanda Livingston, and I have, I was a former colleague of Ms. Bardwell at WSSC Water. It is with pride and unwavering confidence that I am present today to humbly request that you affirm the nomination of Maxine Bardwell as the Chief Administrative Officer for the Office of the County Executive, Honorable Brave Boy, for confirmation. Maxine's journey to this moment is not only a testament to her exceptional qualifications, but also a reflection of the values we all hold dear, integrity, perseverance, and service. Allow me to briefly share that Maxine and I began, together at WSSC Water, a partnership divined by innovation, collaboration, and unwavering commitment to progress. In 2006, I was privileged to start my role as the Director of the Supplier Diversity and Inclusion Office, while Maxine joined as the Director of Internal Audit. We both stepped in our position at a pivotal moment in WSSC's history, as the organization faced intense challenges and pressed forward under newly-assembled leadership team. Despite the turbulence, our shared dedication to positive change quickly united us. The summer before I joined the commission, the MBE program had sunsetted, and our authority to advance economic inclusion was in jeopardy, yet leadership recognized a vital mission, to restore this authority and launch a transformative effort, supported by comprehensive disparity studies. As we developed our vision, it became clear that WSSC's impact extended beyond providing life-sustaining water. It was about, it was also about fostering opportunity and prosperity within our communities through dynamic economic inclusion, job creation, and local business partnership. Between 2006 and 2017, something truly remarkable unfolded. We completed two pivotal disparities.
Ms. Livingston? I admire you for...
Okay, can I just say this last thing? Please, Chair?
Five seconds.
I'm sorry.
Five seconds.
Maxine Bardwell, I just want to say, because of what we've been through, Maxine Bardwell is a leader whose impact radiates far beyond titles or accolades. She has consistently demonstrated a rare blend of vision, humility, strength, and compassion, whether navigating complex challenges or uplifting those around her. Maxine leads with clarity, purpose, and rooted.
I want to say this one thing very quickly.
I just want to say, in confirming Maxine, you are not simply endorsing a candidate, you are affirming the future of Prince George's County. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Ms. Livingston. See, the issue is, you know, it's fine. Right, exactly. Exactly. All right. Ms. Bardwell, control your witnesses. We're going to hold you personally responsible. With that, this public hearing has concluded. Is there a motion?
Motion to confirm.
Second. Okay, went so fast. It was moved by Councilmember Blague, seconded by, okay, you're a constituent, Councilmember Dornoga. Moved by Councilmember Dornoga, seconded by Councilmember Blague. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Chair Burrows?
I vote yes. Congratulations. Look forward to working with you. You've already done a great job with this amazing team. Look forward to your continued leadership. I vote yes.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
I vote aye.
Ms. Blague?
Look forward to working with you.
Oh, pardon me. I'm sorry. Ms. Blague?
I vote aye, and I just want to say, I have never seen so many Sigma Gamma Rho in this building since you got here. Y'all must got an office, but I vote aye.
Mr. Dornoga?
I vote aye, and I just have to say that I'm so impressed with your background and experience, and it really truly aligns with the job that you're undertaking, which is the most, really the most important job in the county, even more than the county exec's job, because you have to run everything for her. I'm just kidding, Madam Brave Boy.
Ms. Fisher?
I vote aye. I was going to say, I agree with Councilmember Dornoga's comments, but not that little last bit. I have never seen so many poodles as well, you know, in our county, but I do love, I love the sisterhood, and, you know, it just speaks to the fact that Prince George's County is a family, first and foremost, and I know that you're going to run the family of the Brave Boy administration with some tough love sometimes, grace sometimes, and we will all benefit from the many sleepless, sleepless nights I know that you've had and that you have in front of you. So, thank you so much, and if there's anything that we can do to make it more successful, please let me know.
Mr. Hawkins?
I have to stay within my 60 seconds. I have, they have control of my mic. I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
I vote aye, and thank you for the work that you've already done, and look forward to working with you more. Thank you.
Vice Chair Oriada?
Thank you. I vote aye, and I just echo the similar comments from my colleagues, and I had the pleasure of having lunch with you right after you came into this position, and you have just such a nice, calming demeanor, which I think will be helpful when you have such a hard job. So I just know that you're going to hold that position with so much grace and compassion, and hats off for being a woman with a CPA. I know that that takes a level of work. My mom is a CPA, so all those women are very brilliant. So, thank you. I vote aye.
Ms. Watson?
I vote aye, and explaining my vote, I'm so proud to do so. I look forward to working with you. I think you're a phenomenal woman, and thank you for your work so far. Look forward to the great work that you have to come. So, thank you.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Next, at the request of the 26th District Central Committee Member, we'll have Ms. Alice Williams. And Ms. Bardwell, Ms. Livingston left in the middle of the vote. She took up all that time and left in the middle of the vote.
She has to go back to work.
She would still be talking on the mic, though. All right. I will now turn to Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prince George's County Council's Government and Fiscal Policy Committee convened on September 11th, 2025, to consider the appointment of the Director of the Office of Procurement, Ms. Alice Williams. The Director of the Office of Procurement shall be responsible for the administration of county laws relating to procurement, supplier diversity, and administering such procurement-related services as may be required by law. Ms. Williams shared some of her experiences over the years of service in the federal government, and thanked the county executive for her nomination and trust. After discussion, the Prince George's County Council's Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee reported favorably on Ms. Alice Williams's appointment, as the council... Policy Committee reported favorably on Ms. Alice Williams's appointment as the county's Director of the Office of Procurement 5 to 0. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And just for the record, this is Appointment 10-25. Appointment of the following individual as the Director of Procurement for Prince George's County, Ms. Williams. And with that, I'll turn to our county executive.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon again. It is my pleasure to submit for your consideration the appointment of Ms. Alice Williams as the Director of the Office of Procurement for Prince George's County. It is with the highest level of confidence and admiration that I offer this appointment. Few professionals bring the unmatched combination of technical mastery, strategic foresight, and principled leadership that Ms. Williams embodies. With more than 38 years of experience spanning federal procurement, policy innovation, executive management, and mission-critical consulting, she represents exactly the kind of transformative leadership our county needs at this time. As Acting Director, sorry, Acting and Deputy Director in the Senior Executive Service Program, she saw, oversaw, excuse me, a $190 billion procurement portfolio and led a team of 700 people, which is a lot. She helped shape national procurement policy during some of the most defining moments in our history, including the federal response to 9/11, multiple presidential transitions, and essential defense and homeland security programs. Her work with the Minority Business Development Agency helped secure over $1.2 billion in federal contracts for minority-owned businesses, a powerful testament to her lifelong commitment to economic justice and inclusive growth. Let me tell you, since she has been here, she has really shaken things up. She is delivering on her promise for inclusion and expanding opportunities for wealth creation for local and minority businesses right here in Prince George's County. She has embraced the philosophy and motto that it is good business to do business with the people of Prince George's County. And so, in her way, she will help to elevate the standard of living and wealth creation and building in this community. She understands the assignment, and she's definitely the right person for the job. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Remarks from the nominee?
Good afternoon. I believe it's still afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair, and distinguished members of the county council. I appear before you today with deep gratitude and humility as the nominee of our county executive, the Honorable Ayesha Bray Boy, to serve as Director of the Office of Procurement and Purchasing Agent for Prince George's County. I want to sincerely thank Honorable County Executive Bray Boy.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
For her trust and confidence, and I thank each of you for your thoughtful consideration of my nomination. Also want to thank my mother who's here. She's sitting right behind me. My children who are also here, Brittany and Bernard, and my granddaughter is back there somewhere, Yori, and then I have a young, my youngest son is streaming today, so he's watching a stream. He's in Norfolk, Virginia today, so I want to thank you all for being here. My dad couldn't be here because of medical reasons, but he would have been here if he could, so thank you so much. For nearly four decades, I have been privileged to serve this nation through a career grounded in public service, physical stewardship, and procurement integrity. My federal tenure with the Department of Defense and the Department of the Army included leadership roles overseeing complex, high-visibility acquisitions that supported our nation's mission, honored our service members. Since serving as Acting Director of the Office of Procurement, I have been focused strengthening the foundation and independence of the Office of Procurement, working in close partnership with county leadership. I have helped advance efforts that led the county executive to sign Executive Order 44-2025, which restore full procurement authority to the purchasing agent and the Office of Procurement. My office also developed Council Bill CB-100-25, legislation designated to enhance and modernize procurement activities across Prince George's County. I will be providing comments to the full council on that bill later today. This bill represents the next step in making ideas and vision for procurement reform a reality. Prince George's County now stands at an important moment. As a newly independent agency, the Office of Procurement has the opportunity to establish a model of excellence, not only for Maryland but for the jurisdictions across the nation. If confirmed, my priorities will be focused and result-driven. I will have transparency and accountability at every stage of the procurement process to strengthen public trust. I will also provide efficiencies and innovations through streamlined operations and the adoption of best practices from government and industry alike. I will make sure fairness and inclusion by ensuring county-based mall minority-owned bases have equitable access to contracting opportunities. And most importantly, collaborations and partnerships so that procurement becomes not a barrier but a bridge to services that improves the daily lives of our residents. I have worked to open our doors to county-based businesses, inviting them to share their capabilities and engage in honest dialogue. This collaborative approach reflects my belief that procurement should operate with both excellence and accessibility, aligning with our county executive's vision of inclusion and economic growth. This is more than a professional assignment for me. It is a personal calling. As a proud Prince George's County resident for more than 28 years, I am deeply invested in the success of our community. My commitment is to ensure that every procurement decision reflects integrity, fairness, excellence, and that every contract awarded contributes to the economic growth and prosperity of this county. Together with your partnership, the leadership of our county executive, each county agency, and the dedication of our procurement professionals, we can build a procurement system that not only meets the demands of today but positions Prince George's County for sustained growth and transparency well into the future. So I thank you for the opportunity to share my visions and my qualifications. I respectfully ask for your confirmation and look forward to serving with each of you in advancing procurement excellence for Prince George's County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now move to our speakers. Our first speaker is Everett Browning.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, honorable members of the council. My name is Everett Browning, and today I'm not only honored, but I'm humbled to come before you in support of Ms. Alice Williams. 22 years in the military and multiple combat missions, anyone who's been in that position would tell you, the most important person to you is the person beside you and your procurement person who makes sure everything is there is right. When I left the military and joined procurement as a government contractor, everyone had one name to go talk to if you want to understand how to do it right, and that was Ms. Alice Williams. She wasn't going to tell you what you wanted to hear, she was going to tell you what you needed to hear. And when Madam County Executive let us know firmly that she wanted to make sure she had people in place focused on her black businesses, I thought for the first time I was giving her some news and went to her and said, "I got the perfect person." And as she does, she smiled nicely, tapped me and said, "I got it." I said, "No, Alice," she said, "I got it." She had already interviewed Alice, of course. She's always ahead of me on everything, but I want to say thank you. It's an honor to have you serve the business owners of Prince George's County.
Thank you. Troy Lilly? Mayor Lilly?
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, who is the representative for District 8, where the town of Forest Heights is located, which is my district. To the other council colleagues, good afternoon. It's my distinct honor and privilege to be here to speak as an affirmative voice for Mrs. Alice Williams to be confirmed as the Director of Procurement. She's a neighbor down in South County in District 8, and so we're proud of you being elevated to this position, but we're even more excited because it's about three things: you're credentialed, you're composed, but you're decisive. And as Mr. Everett Browning just said, Ms. Williams is not going to be swayed by people trying to influence her. She has integrity as her number-one priority, and we've talked privately both about her goals for this role and about the compassion and care and the great responsibility she knows that she has walking into this role. So with that, I just want to say to the council that I strongly support your confirmation of Ms. Alice Williams, and we're looking forward to what you're going to do for the county. Also, thank you to Madam County Executive for making such a strong, bold, and appropriate choice for this time and moment.
Thank you. Danny Moore King? Want to withdraw? Okay. That concludes our public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion favorable.
Second.
Okay. I'll move it. She's in my district. I'll, and Ms. Adam Stafford will second it. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Chair Burrows?
Keep up the great work. I said everything I need to say in committee. I vote yes.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
I vote yes, and we've had such a wonderful meeting to talk about how to support our business owners here, especially our county-based businesses. We already have a bill that we're going to be hoping to work on and collaborate on, and as someone who intimately knows what it takes specifically in regards to this work, I'm very grateful that you're here and serving in this role and bringing your wealth of knowledge and really truly your passion. County business owners really need you and will be relying on you to help us, to help all of us really understand what it's going to take to elevate businesses here in the county. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, 30-second timer.
Ms. Blague?
I vote aye, and I just want to say, I believe everyone put the motion forward because they've experienced what I've experienced. You have been on the move from day one, pushing to make sure that we got what we needed. I mean, I have an event tonight that you can't be, but you made sure your staff is there. Whenever I've asked, you have come. Every business owner I've sent to you, you have had open doors, and my residents are already saying that this has been a change. So thank you to you, and thank you to Madam County Executive.
Mr. Denoga?
Extremely pleased to vote aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Happy to vote aye. I'm not going to make any more comments because Mr. Chair is irritated.
Mr. Harrison?
I vote aye, and I'm here to support. Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins? Oh, pardon me.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Vote aye and look forward to working with you.
Ayesha Riada?
I vote aye and just echo the comments of Councilmember Blague. You hit the ground running, and thank you for your work you've already done to help me in my district.
Ms. Watson?
I vote aye, and I want to say thank you because I believe you came to my event like your first week, serving in your position. So I just thank you for all that you've done so far, and I've just seen great work come out of the Office of Procurement and look forward to working with you. Thank you, Madam County Executive.
Motion carries 10-0.
Congratulations. Next, we'll have the Appointment 13-25. Appointment of the following individual as Fire Chief of Prince George's County, Demetria Michaelitis. I'll turn to Councilmember Blague for a committee report. Fire chief?
The Health, Human Service, and Public Safety Committee met on September 18th, 2025 to consider the appointment of Acting Fire Chief Demetria Michaelitis as Fire Chief. Staff provided comments on Acting Fire Chief Michaelitis's nomination as Fire Chief noting that Ms. Daniel Hunter, appointment liaison, Office of the County Executive will provide additional educational and professional background information. Ms. Hunter introduced Acting Fire Chief, highlighting her 26 years of experience in fire service, emergency response, public safety, and community engagement. She stated that Acting Fire Chief holds a bachelor's degree in fire science and has completed extensive training and certificates. Deputy B.J. Harris described Acting Fire Chief as "a dedicated, humble, and fair leader who prioritized community safety and firefighter well-being." He said she is respected both as a chief and mentor, and the county is fortunate to have her leadership. Acting Fire Chief thanked the council and the county executive for the opportunity to lead the fire and EMS department. She highlighted her priorities and improved staffing, reducing overtime by moving personnel back into the field, and strengthening community trust through collaboration and safety initiatives. Acting Fire Chief shared that the department is moving forward with national accreditation, a milestone that has been stalled for a decade and is only achieved by few agencies in Maryland. She has also resolved longstanding pay issues, increased communication with staff and volunteers, and launched new initiatives such as the Wellness App for firefighters and community coffee chats to build trust. Looking ahead, she announced a plan for Camp Trailblazer, a program to inspire young girls to consider careers in fire service. The committee member strongly endorses Acting Chief Michaelitis, applauding her track record of accessibility, community focus, and leadership, and expressed excitement about her future impact. The Health, Human Service, and Public Safety Committee voted favorably 5-0 on the Acting Chief as Fire Chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam County Executive?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I'm going to try to get through this one without tearing up because I have known Chief Michaelitis for, wow, over 20 years. Yeah. It's been several years. We met when we were both five. Chief Michaelitis brings to this position more than 26 years of dedicated service in fire and EMS services, public safety leadership, community outreach, and intergovernmental coordination. Her career has been defined by courage, compassion, and an unyielding commitment to excellence. Over the course of her career, Chief Michaelitis rose through the ranks of the Prince George's County Fire EMS Department, advancing to the level of Battalion Chief, and she was the first female bomb tech in the history of, is it Maryland or Prince George's County? Prince George's County. And the first African-American bomb tech, female bomb tech in Prince George's County and in the state of Maryland. So she is already a history maker. She served, well, she had the nerve to retire, right? But she continued to serve the community, and she served as Community Affairs Director for the Office of the State's Attorney for Prince George's County. But early in her career, she started the High School Cadet Fire Science Program, and this is a program that really mentors the next generation of firefighters and emergency responders. I'm looking forward to her growing that program here in Prince George's County because we have so many talented young people who probably have never thought about serving us in this way, but their excellent careers and opportunities to really gain wealth and serve your community through fire service. So I'm very proud of her. I can tell you that the people in our community are excited when they see her. She's known as Chief Mimi, and we appreciate her dedicated service to this county, her commitment, her love of Prince George's County, and her family. I want to recognize her husband, who I actually met before I met her. He was the president of the Local Firefighters Association, George Michaelitis. Is he here? Yes, thank you so much. And she has, she has some amazing young daughters and a son, but her daughters, at least one of them, serves us here as a member of the Prince George's County Police Department. And what we know is that she and her siblings were raised to achieve excellence, and that's, and to serve, and to serve, and that's what we know that she'll bring to other young people growing up in this county. So thank you all so much, and hopefully you will consider her favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. It's our nominee. It's our nominee.
Initially, I was gonna say good morning, but good afternoon now. Those were some great words, um, amazing words that the county executive said about me. And, um, she knows that I'm a very hard worker. I'm the boots-on-the-ground kind of person, and I like to get it done. And for me, excellence in everything. So I'll start my speech. Put my glasses on first. Let me see. Standing before you today is one of the greatest honors of my life. To take this oath as the Fire Chief is humbling and deeply meaningful. I stand here not because of what I have done alone, but because of the people who have believed in me, supported me, walked beside me every step of the way. I count amongst those people County Executive Ayesha Braveboy, and I want to thank her for her continued support and for entrusting me with this critical responsibility and this critical moment in time. This moment isn't about one person, it's about a legacy. A legacy of carriage, commitment, resilience, that defines Prince George's County Fire EMS Department. Every along answer, every act of compassion, every moment of teamwork, these are the threads that have woven this department into what it is today. To my sisters, stand up sisters. You have been my rock from the very beginning, my cheerleaders, my truth tellers, and my strength when I felt like I was on empty. You have celebrated every victory and stood with me through every challenge. And I must say that because they've been with me since my first born, been helping me out, and they could not understand why have I gone through all these different challenges in the fire services, and one was to become a bomb tech? That was my most challenge, but you know what? I did it, and I got through it. And I was the number one in my class because they thought that I couldn't do it. I'm sorry. They're just so touching. Your love and belief in me have carried me further than you've ever known, but that's what we do, isn't it? Love and supported each other throughout our lives, through ups and downs, and the good and the bad. So it's together that we share this moment. To my family, my husband, my four children, my cousin, my cousin uncle and aunt, where y'all at? Oh, my gosh. And my four children, incredible. You are my heart. You are the reason why I stand here today with a purpose and peace. Why it had to be the crybaby? Oh, my gosh. My husband has been my steady hand, my partner, my calm through every storm. Your patience, your quiet strength, and your faith in me have been my anchor. I love you. To my children, you are my greatest joy and my greatest motivation. Stand up, girls, and my niece. You remind me why leadership matters. Because every choice I make, every step I take, is about creating a better world for you. I hope that when you look at me, you see what's possible through hard work, faith, and... To my friends, my friends, where are you? I know you're here. I am overwhelmed by the outpouring of the love, the outpouring of the love and support from all of you. Thank you for making this day so special and filling it with unforgettable moments. Your presence here today is the greatest gift. To the men and women of this department, career, volunteer, and civilian, you are the soul of this organization. You are the reason our community trusts us. Every call you answer, every hour you train, every sacrifice you make reflects the very best of who we are. You make me proud to serve along your side. Can I acknowledge and recognize my command staff and all my volunteers that are here? Stand up, guys. Stand up. To our families, the ones who share this calling with us, thank you. Your love is the strength behind every firefighter's carriage. You endure the late nights, the missed dinners, the uncertainties, and yet, you continue to give your support and understanding. You carry a silent burden, but you do it with grace and pride. You are as much a part of this mission as anyone wearing this uniform. To Council Chair Behrs, Vice Chair Ariada, and the council members and the community partners, thank you for your trust and confidence. Leadership at this level is about more than management. It's about vision, integrity, and service. My vision is clear, to lead a department rooted in excellence, compassion, and unity. A department that doesn't just respond to emergencies, but prepare for the future, invest in its people, and take care of its own. I'm almost done, I promise you. We will continue to build a culture of growth, safety, and opportunity where every member, from recruit to command staff, feels valued and power and supported. The strength of this department has never been in our stations or our apparatus, it has been in our people. As your Fire Chief, I plead to lead with transparency, fairness, and heart. I will listen, I will challenge us to rise higher, think smarter, and serve stronger together. To every young firefighter watching, remember, leadership is not a title, it's a responsibility. It's about serving others, staying humble, and never forgetting where you came from. I started where many of you are now, and I carry those lessons with me every day. Today, as I take this oath, I do so with gratitude for my family, my sisters, my mentors, my colleagues, and the generation who paved the way for this moment. Together, we will continue to build a department that reflects the very best of Prince George's County, one built on honor, service, and heart. Thank you all. It is the privilege of my life to serve as your Fire Chief. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll turn to the speakers. The first one is Ms. Cunningham, then followed by Mr. Green.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the council. My name is Diane Cunningham. I'm a retired employee of the Prince George's County Fire EMS Department, having served the citizens and residents of this great county for more than three decades. It is my absolute pleasure to stand before you to speak on behalf of Acting Fire Chief Demetria Ian Michaelitis. I, the heavy lifting has been done thanks to, um, County Executive Ayesha Braveboy, and I thank you for that. Took a weight off my shoulder. So you all know all of the things she's accomplished. You got the accolades, you got that stuff down pat. And I'm not even here to convince anybody, honestly. It's not my role to convince you all to, um, vote yes for Acting Fire Chief Michaelitis, but rather to confirm what you already know, and that is that she is indeed the right candidate for this appointment to Chief of the Prince George's County Fire EMS Department. She mentioned leadership, and I had something else written here, but I'm gonna just talk to that for a moment. Please don't ring that bell on me.
I think your time is already up, so if you wanna just take ten seconds?
But in the book of Jeremiah, chapter one, I think it's around verse five or six, the scripture talks about when God spoke to the prophet Jeremiah, and he told him, "When you were being formed in your mother's womb, I ordained you to be a prophet to the nations." And he went on to tell Jeremiah, he'd made that declaration over Jeremiah's life, and that is what Jeremiah was. I submit to you that in Chief, Acting Chief Michaelitis' mother's womb, God made a similar declaration, and that is that he ordained her to be a leader. She's born a leader, it's in her DNA to be a leader, and she has demonstrated that for the thirty-plus years that I have known her. In addition to that...
I'm sorry, man, your time has expired? Yeah. Uh, Mr. Green, you're next.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna tell ya, I feel like crying this morning. Uh, Mimi, it's got me with tears. My name's Edwin Green. I'm an activist and a resident in District Heights. I don't think I need to say yes, yes, any longer, because I know that you will vote for our Acting Chief. But let me tell you what I feel you're getting. You're getting a strong leader. You're getting a person with integrity. You're getting an effective communication person who can build trust with her personnel and this community. You're getting a skilled person in management. She is a strategic thinker. She is a problem solver. She will make fair and timely decisions for this department. I assure you, I know firsthand. And let's recognize her motherhood as well as the wife's responsibility. Thank you. I appreciate the moment.
Uh, thank you very much. This public hearing has concluded. Uh, colleagues, I don't want to, uh, run into quorum issues, so let's, let's pick up the pace. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Dinoga, seconded by Councilmember Watson to confirm. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Dinoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye, and I'm picking up the pace. I just want to say thank you for all your help in District Two during COVID. It was a big deal. I had the highest COVID contraction rate in the, in the state, and you were there every day. I vote aye.
Mr. Harrison?
I vote aye, and thank you for your service.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
It's a pleasure to vote aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
I vote aye. You know, I absolutely love you and can't wait to continue to work with you.
Ms. Watson?
I vote aye, and I'm so honored to do so.
Ms. Blague?
Um, I vote aye, and I, and I just want to thank you. You've been a great help to me with understanding the issues of the private department, and I, and I happily vote aye.
Motion carries ten zero.
I do want to note for the record, uh, Pete, uh, who I believe is on the, with the volunteer firefighters, uh, s- sent me a message saying that he's one hundred percent supportive of you, but he had to run to an appointment in Baltimore. Congratulations. Director Allen? Uh, appointment nine dash twenty-five. Appointment of the following, following individual is Director of Finance, Prince George's County, Linda Allen. I'll turn to Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Prince George's County Council's Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee convened on September eleventh, twenty twenty-five to consider Ms. Linda Allen's appointment as the Director of the Office of Finance. The Director is responsible for the disbursement of county funds, the proceeds of all county taxes levied in the county, and all other funds received from the council or for the county and collected by them. Prior to her appointment as the Acting Director of the Office of Finance, Ms. Allen was the Deputy Director of Finance, serving as the Acting Director of the Office of Finance and Chief Treasury. After discussion, Committee Vice Chair Blague made a motion to favor the appointment, and it was seconded by Councilmember Dinoga. The GOFP Committee voted to approve the appointment of Linda Allen as Director of Finance, five zero. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
County Executive?
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and again, members of the county council, thank you so much for considering these very important nominations, uh, to my cabinet. It is my pleasure to, to submit, uh, for your consideration, the appointment of Linda Vaughn Allen as Director of the Office of Finance for Prince George's County. Ms. Allen is a proven leader with more than two decades of experience across the public and private sectors. Since joining Prince George's County Government in two thousand and five, she has risen through the ranks to her current role as Acting Director of Finance, where she oversees all administrative and operational functions of the department, leads a talented team of seventy-one employees, and manages a seven million dollar, uh, departmental budget. Her portfolio includes accounting, tax administration, payroll, payroll, cash and investment, uh, management, uh, risk management, and debt management, ensuring that our fiscal operations align with our strategic county priorities, comply with all mandates, and strengthen internal governance. As Deputy Director of Finance, Ms. Allen co-led fiscal operations for one of the nation's largest counties, contributing to the stewardship of a four-point-eight billion-dollar general fund. She helped guide countywide finan- financial policy, led cash flow forecasting, and represented the county before bond rating agencies, supporting our strong financial standing. She also chaired the PGC Risk Pool Committee and advised the Revenue Authority Retirement Plan Board, demonstrating sound judgment and a steady hand in complex, high-stakes environments. Ms. Allen holds an MBA from the University of Maryland's Robert H. Smith School of Business and ABS in Finance from UMUC. She is a certified cash manager and an active member of professional organizations, including the Government Finance Officers Association and the Maryland Tax Collectors Affinity Group. Her civic commitment is also evident as she serves as Treasurer of the Knowles at Cabin Branch HOA. It is my pleasure, Mr. Chair, to put forward the name of Linda Vaughn Allen. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Allen?
On my notes, I have good morning. But it is afternoon, so good afternoon, um, Chair Burrows, Vice Chair Orietta, and members of the county council. My name is Linda Allen, and it is my distinct honor to appear before you today as I seek your confirmation to serve as Prince George's County's next Director of Finance. I want to sincerely thank County Executive Ayesha Braveboy for placing her trust in me, um, through this appointment, and I want to thank you, the members of the council, for your time and consideration. It has truly been a pleasure to work with you throughout the years, um, that I've been in the Office of Finance, and I look forward to continuing our collaborative, um, efforts to strengthen the county's financial position and build upon the progress we've achieved together. I also want to express my deep appreciation to the outstanding team in the Office of Finance, many of which I think are here today. I'd like to acknowledge them. Um, their professionalism, dedication, and commitment to excellence are the reason I love what I do and the foundation of our department's success. I would also like to thank, uh, my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, really, for his hand in my life. Um, he has guided every step of the way, um, to bring me to this day today. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my children, um, Jay, Lindsay, and Langley. Um, Jay and Lindsay are here today, and I want them to also be acknowledged. They are truly my greatest source of support and informa- and, and inspiration. My family is also watching online. They couldn't be here today, and I thank them for their continued love and support throughout my career. As Director of Finance, my foremost goal is to ensure the county's continued fiscal stability and integrity while positioning us for sustainable, long-term growth. We have a strong foundation built on sound financial management, transparency, and accountability, and I am committed to preserving and enhancing those principles. My priorities as Finance Director will focus on three key areas. First, strengthening our financial resilience. We must continue to manage our resources prudently while... We must continue to manage our resources prudently while preparing for future challenges. This includes maintaining healthy reserves, responsibly managing debt, and making strategic investments that balance today's needs with tomorrow's opportunities. Second, modernizing financial operations. The county's financial systems and processes are the backbone of our service delivery. I intend to build on our progress in automation, data analytics, and financial reporting to improve efficiency, accuracy, and accessibility for both internal and external stakeholders. And third, empowering people and partnerships. Finance does not operate in isolation. Our success depends on collaboration across agencies, with our council partners, and with our residents. I will continue to foster a culture of service, professionalism, and continuous improvement within the Office of Finance to ensure we remain a trusted partner to all who rely upon us. I am deeply proud of the work we do and the value that guides us. Service, excellent, and integ- excellence and integrity. With your support, I am confident that we can continue advancing Prince George's County's financial strength and ensuring that every dollar entrusted to us serves our residents effectively and equitably. Thank you for your time, your trust, and the opportunity to serve. With humility and gratitude, I respectfully ask for your support and confirming me as the new Director of Finance for Prince George's County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Early here? He'll be the first speaker. And then it's Mr. McGibbin here. There you go.
Good to see you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, it's great to see you, Mr. Early.
And Councilmembers, uh, I'll try to hit this minute. Um, I, uh, Ms. Allen is, has served the county for 20 years, and in the past eight years, I've worked with her in various financial, on various financial issues in the county, and I've found that Linda is one of the hardest-working human beings you will ever meet in your life. She is honest and honorable. She clearly, she communicates clearly and precisely. She has exceptional analytic skills, uh, and she really listens. I mean, she really listens when there are issues. She is deeply concerned about the county and its resi- residents, and she is simply a consummate professional. She is, in my mind, clearly the best possible choice for the finance, role of Finance, uh, Director of this county. And in a word, she is magnificent.
Thank you. And what a great endorsement to have, Director Allen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Orietta, members of the County Council, Madam County Executive. It's an honor for me to be here, back in this chamber, um, and for such an occasion as this. I, um, I want to give my strong endorsement to, um, Ms. Linda Allen, uh, as the Director of Finance. Having had the privilege of working with Linda for more than 14 years, I can personally attest to her exceptional qualifications, her deep financial expertise, and steadfast commitment to public service. With extensive experience in treasury management, fiscal operations, and also tax collection and all the stuff that goes along with that, constituent services, et cetera, Ms. Allen brings both technical proficiency and the sound judgment that this important position demands. During my tenure as Director of Finance, Ms. Allen served as my Deputy Director, and I came to regard her not only as a trusted colleague, but as a true partner and co-leader. Uh, her leadership style is thoughtful, it's constructive, and it's deeply human. Ms. Allen has what can be described as a multiplier effect, in that she elevates those around her. She takes the time to truly know the individuals who comprise her team, and she anticipates the needs of her team and, and takes quiet, deliberate action to support them without seeking attention or without regard for credit. She's high, she has high emotional intelligence and has made her, which has made her the, kind of, the glue of the organization. Um, she kind of holds things together. She has a calm presence. She has empathy. She has steadiness, and she is, um, she is the person that you're, that you have grown to know over the years. Um, her leadership extends beyond the walls of the agency. She has been a key contributor to county government for so many years. Um, she has helped when we transitioned from our legacy system to the SAP Financial System. She was a key contributor in that effort as well. Um, and, and she's sat on many of your task forces, uh, as you dealt with property tax credit issues. She has staffed those, um, task forces, uh, so that the citizens can benefit and so that you can have informed fiscal policy. So, in wrapping up, um, I just want to say that I have absolute confidence that Ms. Allen is the right person to lead the Office of Finance forward. She combines expertise with heart. She exemplifies the kind of servant leadership that strengthens not only this agency, but our entire county government. As such, I respectfully urge you, the County Council, to confirm her nomination, as the county will be in excellent hands under her leadership. And she is a capable, principled, and compassionate leader, and I commend Ms. Allen to you and to this body for your favorable consideration. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the council, I thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Director Allen. I agree with everything they said. Look forward to working with you. Colleagues?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Denoga, seconded by Councilmember Fisher. No need to explain your vote, because we will lose quorum. We need eight votes to proceed throughout most of this, and the people who have spoken the longest have to leave early. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blighay?
Aye, for my District Six resident.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye, for longtime stalwart in the Finance Department.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
I'm so proud of you. I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Happy, happy, and honored to vote aye.
Motion carries ten zero.
Last but not least, Director Wright, please come forward. Ma- Madam County Exec, if you could abbreviate your comments. Mr. Wright, if you could abbreviate your comments. I know, but some of these bills require eight votes, and if we don't have eight votes, then today's the last day for instruction. They're gonna, they're not gonna proceed, so.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll be very, very brief-
I'm ready to, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you so much again for considering, uh, this very important nomination, the appointment of Mr. Bernard Wright as the Director of the Office of Information Technology. He has more than 20 years of experience. He has both public and private sector experience, having served as the Chief Technology Officer here in Prince George's County. Uh, what else can I say, other than I ask for a favorable consideration of someone who has proven himself both inside and outside government? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Oh, okay.
Uh, briefly, you'll have 30 seconds.
All right. Um, yeah, so i- it's no fun going last, especially when we're overscheduled, but, um, I'll get direct, directly to the point and tell you who I am. Uh, so I grew up in Prince George's County. I am a product of Hillcrest Heights. Um, I've lived in Sea Pleasant, District Heights, Forestville, a lot of places where, um, someone was not supposed to have the career that I've had. And I'll tell you a little bit about my career. So, I served as the Chief Technology Officer for EDS, uh, which was, uh, about 120,000 people. I was also Director of Technology for Hillary Clinton, uh, during her Senate reelection in 2008 presidential campaign. I was CIO here, as was mentioned, uh, for about six years. I was also CIO for WSC Water, and I was also CIO and VP of Operations for Iron Boat Technologies, which is a billion-dollar federal contractor. Um, started a couple of companies, both here in Prince George's County. And the reason that I returned is so that I could work with our county executive, who I'm very thankful for giving me this opportunity. And the reason that I wanted to come back as a part of this administration is because I am afraid that my story is no longer going to be possible. Um, and I'll tell, I'll give you, I'll be brief, but I'll give you a few stats that are relevant. Uh, so, when you take a look at the unemployment rate for computer technology majors, that's 6.9%. For, uh, computer tech, for computer, uh, engineers, that's 7.5%. Look at the unemployment rates for black people that are going up month over month. Uh, the, in June, that number was 6.9%. July, it was 7.2. September, it was up to 7.5. We haven't gotten the stats for last month, because, of course, the government has shut down. Uh, then, another complicating factor is the investment going into black-owned startups. So, we only got 0.5% of the investment in 2023. Last year, that went down to 0.4. So, you see what is happening. So, my job is to make sure that we are creating a tech ecosystem here in Prince George's County, and I'm looking forward to working with you to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Uh, there are no public speakers. This public hearing has been adopted.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved by Councilmember Fisher, seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bligh- oh, pardon me, she stepped away. Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye, excited to have you back.
Mr. Harrison?
My brother, I'm proud of you. Congratulations. I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
I vote aye, but I do need to say on the record that after discussion, the Prince George's County Council's Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee reported favorably on Mr. Bernard Wright's appointment as the County Director of the Office of Information Technology, five to zero. Thank you.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. If you can immediately switch the system over to Committee of the Whole?
Yes, sir. So, we need, um, are we in recess? Can we do the motion for that?
Yes, we will stand in recess-
Thank you.
-up until the system is flipped.
Absolutely.
Let's flip it, because we're gonna... Right, lock the doors. That's great.
Ooh. Shoot. We gotta call security.
We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security. We gotta call security.
We have returned, and we're now sitting as committee of the whole. Again, today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good afternoon, Chair Burrows.
Present.
Ms. Adam Stafford? Okay. Mr. Denoga? Pardon me? Is microphone? Okay, Mr. Denoga is present. Mr. Harrison?
I'm present.
What is, what's going on? Okay, I think we're there. Uh, Mr. Olson?
Here.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Here.
Ms. Watson?
Present.
Ms. Bligay? And Mr. Hawkins is here. Uh, nine members are present, thank you, sir.
Thank you. For the record, CB 95, 2025, has been withdrawn. CB 98, uh, an act concerning supplementary appropriations for the purpose of declaring transfer, transferring appropriation within the general fund to provide for the costs that were not anticipated included in the approved fiscal year 2026 budget. I will turn to Mr. Tutt for a brief staff overview.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. CB 98, 2025, is an act concerning supplementary appropriations for the purpose of declaring, transferring appropriations within the general fund to provide for costs that were not anticipated and included in the approved fiscal year 2026 budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate you, sir. Are there any speakers on the speakers list? Seeing those speakers, is there a motion for committee recommendation?
Move favorable?
Second.
It's been moved by the vice chair, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
So confused. Mr. Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins? Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chair, there was a draft two that I should have referred to for that legislation.
98?
For 98.
Okay.
All right, let's, uh, back up. Is there a motion to approve CB 98, 2025, draft two?
Motion to approve CB 98, draft two.
It's been moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by the vice chair. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bligay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins? Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Thank you very much. CB 99, Act Concerning Critical Worker Housing Assistance Program for the purpose of establishing critical worker housing assistance program within the Housing Investment Trust Fund, providing eligibility standards for participation in the program, providing for the assistance to be offered in the program, providing for the application approval process for the program assistance in generally regarding the Housing Investment Trust. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Burrows. Mr. Tutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CB 99, 2025, an act concerning critical worker housing assistance program. This bill would add a new critical worker housing assistance program within the Housing Investment Trust Fund to provide home buying assistance to teachers and public safety workers in the county in the form of zero interest or interest-deferred loans. The program would provide an additional recruitment and retention tool for hard-to-fill positions and help ensure that the workers are able to purchase homes in the communities that they serve. The bill provides criteria for eligibility and financial assistance under the program and empowers the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development to administer the program. Uh, there is a proposed amendment for this legislation. If you'd like, I will review that, the provisions quickly.
Please.
On page two, line 10, you'll strike the word "or" and add a new sub-paragraph 10-299.01B1B, beginning on line 11 as follows. B, a nurse employed full-time in a medical office or a hospital located in Prince George's County or... On page two, line 11, change B to C. And then the third, on page three, following line five, add a new subsection 10-299.01E as follows. Funding, the county council may provide additional funding for the program to be used in accordance with parameters established by the county council. And, uh, final amendment, we would insert the words median income uh, on page two, line 16. Median income for the... And that's on paragraph 10-299-01B2. And the full amendment would read, have a household income not exceeding 120% of the median income for the Washington, Arlington, Alexandria, DC, Virginia, Maryland, West Virginia metropolitan statistical area.
I like...
Is there a motion on the amendment?
Make them favorable on both amendments.
Second.
It's been moved by the vice chair, seconded by Councilmember Watson, uh, to move amendment one. Madam Clerk?
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bligay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Hawkins? Is that one?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries nine, zero.
And on CB 99, motion for committee recommendation?
Favorable as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by the vice chair, seconded by Councilmember Olson, to move favorable as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bligay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries nine, zero.
CB 100, not concerning enhancement of county procurement practices for the purpose of amending provisions of subtitle 10A regarding administrative procedures, award of contracts, prohibited types of contracts, economic development, and generally relating to procurement, subtitle 10A. I'll turn to Mr. Tutt for a brief report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CB 100, 2025, is an act concerning enhancement of county procurement practices. This legislation was presented and referred on October 14th. This bill would amend provisions of subtitle 10A regarding administrative procedures, award of contracts, prohibited types of contracts, economic development, and generally relating to procurement subject to subtitle 10A. The Office of, the Office of Procurement believes the enhancements will streamline procurement procedures and align with best practices and industry standards. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion for committee recommendation? Removed by Councilmember Adam Stafford, seconded by Councilmember Bligay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
This is favorable. Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bligay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
I vote aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries...
CB 101, an act concerning...
Um, Mr. Chair, my apologies, there is an amendment to this item.
My apologies, Mr. Chair. We did receive an amendment this morning for this legislation. Uh, the proposed amendment one, uh, if you'd like, it's rather long, Mr. Chair, but I can share this, um, page 12, line 23. You would remove the language between lines two...
Let's take it up during introduction. Um, you know, we normally don't have long amendments the day of while we're in committee. So we'll take it up at introduction. Uh, CB 101, an act concerning home ownership equity program for the purpose of establishing home ownership equity program for county residents, providing for the purposes and use of home equity program within the Housing Investment Trust Fund, providing for the funding and administration of the home ownership equity program, providing for the eligibility terms, funding, property requirements for buyers, providing for loans of persons and select groups, providing for the application intake, underwriting, closing support, post-purchase follow-up, and approval of administrative rulings and program guidelines in generally regarding home ownership equity program. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Oriata. Mr. Tutt, I'll turn to you for a committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CB 101, an act concerning home ownership equity program. This bill establishes the home ownership equity program for county residents. The bill provides for the purposes and uses of the home ownership equity program within the Housing Investment Trust Fund, as well as the funding and administration of the home ownership equity program. Program eligibility, terms, funding, program requirements for buyers, and loans for persons and select groups are set forth in the bill. Application, intake, underwriting, closing support, post-purchase follow-up, and approval of administrative rules and program guidelines are also set forth in the bill. The Department of Housing and Community Development submitted comments. Uh, they are in support with suggested amendments uh, regarding the fiscal impact to DHCD. The implementation of this bill will require a significant increase to the home housing, uh, trust fund and as, as well as additional staffing to administer the program. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That completes my report. Completes my report.
Thank you. Is there a motion for committee recommendation?
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilmember Bligay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bligay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Excuse me, Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries ten, zero.
Thank you. CB 102, an act concerning sick leave, legal proceedings for the purpose of providing certain mandated paid sick leave for county employees or county or employee family members at legal proceedings, providing for certain definitions, providing for verification of certain sick leave, and generally regarding county personnel law, legal proceedings. Mr. Tutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CB 102, an act concerning sick leave legal proceedings. This bill provides for mandated paid sick leave for a county employee or employee's family member at certain legal, judicial, administrative, and immigration proceedings, allowing for the employee or their family member to prepare for and participate in those proceedings. Enactment of CB 102 is likely to have a limited direct fiscal impact on the county related to a loss in productive time for employees utilizing sick leave to prepare for and participate in those proceedings. And providing additional support to employees and their families could have a positive indirect fiscal impact on the county. Providing leave for sensitive situations like immigration proceedings could improve employee satisfaction and retention, potentially lowering turnover and thus lowering recruitment costs. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion for committee recommendation?
Motion favorable? Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bligay, seconded by both Councilmember Olson and Oriata. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bligay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta? Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries ten, zero.
CB 103, an act concerning real property, declaring certain parcels of county-owned real property as surplus and no longer needed for county use. I'll turn it over to Mr. Tutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CB 101, an act concerning county real property for declaring certain parcels of county-owned real property as surplus and no longer needed for county use. The legislation provides for the designation of 11 real property tax parcels as surplus and no longer needed for county use. Upon adoption, a plan of disposition will be administered by the redevelopment authority as authorized under CB 61, 2023, and will require council approval prior to parcel disposition. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Is there a motion from the committee?
Move favorable?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Bligay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bligay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Orietta?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries ten, zero.
Uh, thank you. CR 126, Resolution Concerning Supporting Foster Care Youth for the purpose of establishing a foster care youth task force that would develop strategies that increase the social safety net and improve outcomes for foster care youth. Examine current county processes, recommend policy and operational and budget actions within the Department of Social Services and other county agencies. This has been sponsored by Burrows, Watson, Olson, Harrison, Adam Stafford, Hawkins, Oriata, Denoga, Fisher, and Bligay. Ms. Ubanks?
Good afternoon, thank you. CR 126, 2025 establishes a foster care task force to review current county practices and processes relating to foster care and youth in the system, including for youth, parents, and guardians impacted by the justice system. Develop recommendation on policy operations and budget finance actions across the relevant county agencies to strengthen the social safety net for foster youth. The task force, the task force must hold its first meeting within 90 days of its creation and then produce a scope memo, work plan, schedule, goals, bylaws for the county council. I will not go over the composition since that is being addressed in the draft two. Mr. David Noto, Legislative Budget and Policy Analyst, indicates that adoption of CR 126, 2025 is not likely to have any physical impact, and the Office of Law finds CR 126, 2025 to be in proper legislative form and see no legal impediments to its adoption. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ramon, for amendment one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, councilmembers. Uh, there is a proposed draft two in your COW additions package, and I'm going to briefly go over them. Uh, you'll see the insertion of child of justice-involved parents in line two of page one, and you're going to see the use of children of justice-involved parents throughout the resolution. The major changes occur on page two from lines 18 to 29. Uh, the Prince George's County Executive shall appoint six members to the foster care task force for a period of one year, and the appointments shall include the Department of Family Services, a representative from the Prince George's County Public Schools, a representative from the Prince George's County Housing Authority, the deputy chief administrative officer for Health and Human Services, and one representative from the faith-based community, for a total of five of the six appointments that the county executive shall make. And on page three, you will see that the Prince George's County Care shall appoint a co-chair from the 19 members, and the DCAO for the Health and Human Services shall also be the task force co-chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you. Did you, did you start with amendment one with the, uh, the children of justice-involved parents? Did I miss that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'd like to move amendment one.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bligay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher? Mr. Harrison?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriada.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries ten zero.
Now for a favorable committee recommendation.
Move favorable.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Blague. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. DeNoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriada.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries ten zero.
CR 128, Resolution Concerning Contract Approvals for the Purpose of Approving Various Multi-Year Contracts for the Office of Information Technology, sponsors are Burrows, Watson, and Hawkins. Mr. Tutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CR 128 is a resolution concerning contract approvals for the purpose of approving various multi-year contracts for the Office of Information Technology. This resolution authorizes the county to enter into contracts for the continued use of Microsoft suite of products, legacy mainframe maintenance, digitization services, GIS licensing and hosting, desktop and telecommunications services, and agreements with resellers of commercial off-the-shelf software. Adoption of CR 128 will have an adverse direct fiscal impact on the county of approximately $21,541,707 in FY '26, and an estimated $106,450,116 over the term of the contracts. Adoption of CR 128 should have a favorable indirect impact on the county via the provision of equipment and services that are the subjects of the respective contracts. Based on the county council's actions this week, the updated contractual documents from Motorola maintenance contract have been received this morning as an amendment. The amended language, number one, revise each document to reflect the period of performance of November 1st, 2025 through October 31 of 2030. And number two, verify that each document has a five-year price of $79,105,000, excuse me, $79,105,000. And there is a list of contractors that is kind of lengthy, so I will not read those.
Thank you. And did you say those are amendments or is it draft two?
Which, excuse me, there is amended language we received from the administration this morning, so it will be a draft.
If I may be heard, I apologize. It's actually part of the documentation that had the wrong numbers and the wrong information. It is not part of the resolution itself, but we wanted to make sure that the council was aware of the right numbers. Thank you.
Got it. Do I have a motion on this?
Second.
Properly motion and second. Can I have a roll call?
Okay. I have Councilmember Harrison as the motion, and Ms. Watson as the second.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Oriada.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. DeNoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Next, we have CR 129-2025, A Resolution Concerning Contract Approvals for the Purpose of Approving a Multi-Year Contract to Procure Maintenance Services for the County Office of Homeland Security, Emergency Management, Communication Equipment, and Supporting Software Sponsors, Hawkins, Harrison, Watson, and Fisher. I'll have an overview.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. CR 129, A Resolution Concerning Contract Approvals. The contract will ensure continuing maintenance of legacy software, hardware licenses for radio communications, computer-aided software, records management software, and next generations 911. The contract term is from October 1st through 2025, October 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2030. And the estimated total value of the contracts is $79,105,900. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Move favorable.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Olson. Can I have a roll call?
Vice Chair Oriada.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. DeNoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Now, we have CR 130-2025, A Resolution Concerning Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission for the Purpose of Approving a Certain Transfer of Appropriations Within the Recreation Fund for the Approved Fiscal Year of 2026 Operating Budget of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, sponsored by Oriada Hawkins. Will I have an overview?
Yes. This resolution amends the adopted FY 2026 Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission operating budget for the Recreation Fund, which set aside community-based recreation programming through project charges to eligible organizations. This resolution proposes to reallocate project charge resources by increasing funding to certain organizations. Title 18 of the Land Use Article authorizes the county council to amend the adopted park and planning budget by way of resolution following a public hearing. There is a proposed draft two A of the legislation that may have been sent to you, council members. I would like to turn to Mr. Irvin to go over those amendments. And that concludes my overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, it's probably good for me to break these amendments down into two parts. The first part is a reallocation, an additional reallocation of project charges. So, on your page three, line seven, you'll see that one of the changes is to reallocate funds from a mental health partnership that was expected for Temple Hills, and move those funds to Jones House. So, that's the straightforward amendment to this resolution. So, now comes the second part. The crux of this change is to direct the Park and Planning Commission to identify all of the funds that have not been obligated or spent for the Largo Headquarters Building, and to reallocate those back to the fund balance of the Administration Fund. And so, you'll see that direction on page two, lines eight through twenty-one. Additionally, in the resolution, we obviously made changes to the title to reflect this change, but what you'll see a lot of in the preamble from page one, line seventeen through page two, line twenty-nine, this is given the context for this change, and that is, in response to two of your recent resolutions that reallocated funds within the park and planning budget, CR 101 and 102, we received feedback from both the Planning Department and the Department of Parks and Recs that they were going to run out of money, that they were projecting a deficit by FY '29, and so, and the vice chair can correct me if I'm wrong, the rationale here is if there is unspent money here in a project that's not as important as being able to maintain your operations, then that money should be reallocated. And so, the resolution both directs the commission to identify how much hasn't been spent or obligated, but it also says, if you, because the council transferred money from three different funds into this headquarters fund, if you can't figure out which money came from which fund, look at how much was spent, how much is unspent right now. And then, you transferred $30 million. If there's less than $30 million or up to $30 million, transfer that balance back to the Administration Fund. And if it's less than $30 million, then that's the amount that you transfer. But the idea is, if there's unspent funds on renovating your headquarters, but you're running out of money, you're projected to run out of money, that you should transfer that back. And so, that's all of the changes in this draft two.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for amendment, or, excuse me, actually, for draft two?
Move favorable for draft two.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call?
Vice Chair Oriada.
Aye.
Councilmember Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Councilmember Blague.
Aye.
Councilmembers DeNoga.
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Olson.
Aye.
Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Moving on to CR 131-2025, A Resolution Concerning Authorizing Specific Law Enforcement Duties for the Office of the Sheriff of Prince George's County for the Purpose of Approving Specific Law Enforcement Duties for the Prince George's County Office of the Sheriff to Collaborate on Responding to Domestic Violence Calls for Service in Prince George's County Police Division Three and Five, or, excuse me, Eight, in accordance to the Section 2-330 of the Courts and Judicial Proceedings Article Annotated Code of Maryland, sponsors Oriada, Fisher, Hawkins, Watson, excuse me, Watson, Burrows. We have a, can I have an overview of proposed draft two? Ms. Eubanks for the overview? Is your mic not working?
Yes, it's working.
Okay.
CR 131-2025 approves a memorandum of understanding between the sheriff's office and the police department to formalize their collaborative response to domestic violence incidents within Police Districts Three and Eight. The authority is granted under Maryland law, specifically Section 2-330 of the Courts and Judicial Proceedings Article of the Maryland Annotated Code. The approval covers the memorandum of understanding through October 1st, 2026. By clarifying the shared duties between agencies, the sheriff and the police, it aims to strengthen the response capacity for domestic violence and enhance coordination across law enforcement jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for draft two?
Move approved, draft two.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Fisher. Can I have a roll call?
Vice Chair Oriada.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. DeNoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Now, we have CR 132, excuse me, oh, I just did, uh, 2025, A Resolution Concerning Prince George's County Enterprise Zone for the Purpose of Endorsing the Proposed Redesignation of the Prince George's County Enterprise Zone Focus Area Sponsors, Harrison, Adam Stafford, and Watson. Can I have an overview?
Yes. The resolution endorses the Economic Development Corporation's application to the Maryland Department of Commerce to recertify the enterprise zone focus areas within Prince George's County. The four focus areas are Seat Pleasant, Capital Heights, Forest Heights, and Landover Hills. The recertification will help EDC support existing businesses, attract new businesses, create new jobs, and enhance the tax base of the county. The county executive sent a letter requesting favorable consideration of this resolution. Also, the Office of Law did not find any impediments to its adoption. That concludes my overview, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Move favorable.
Motion by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Fisher. Can I have a call? Roll.
Madam Vice Chair Oriada.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. DeNoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero. Oh, Mr. Chair. Motion carries ten zero.
CB 104, An Act Concerning Enforcement and the Referral to the Board of Ethics for the Purpose of Requiring Mandatory Review by the Prince George's County Board of Ethics for Any Person Found in Violation of Prince George's County Code, Subtitle II, Section 2, Division 46, Community Inclusiveness. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Fisher. Mr. Tutt, for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CB 104-2025 is an act concerning enforcement and referral to the Board of Ethics for the Purpose of Requiring a Mandatory Review by the Prince George's County Board of Ethics for any person found in violation of the County Code, Subtitle II, Section 2, Division 46, Community Inclusiveness. This legislation would clarify that employees and staff of Prince George's County Government, PGCPs, and county employees will not engage with ICE in social media for county purpose or in any other means. Also, will confirm or encourage that ICE is barred from accessing residents' information and that all county agencies and institutions. That concludes my overview, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion for committee recommendation?
Motion favorable.
It's been moved by Councilmember Oriada, seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford. I'll step away. Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. DeNoga.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher, yes, ma'am.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriada.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
I vote aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
I'd like to make a motion for the additions package.
Zero.
Move favorable.
It's been moved by Councilmember Oriada, seconded by Councilmember Watson and Hawkins to accept additions package. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford. Oh, sorry, stepped away. Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. DeNoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriada.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you very much. CB 86-2025, An Act Concerning the Legacy Wealth Construction Incentive Program for the Purpose of Establishing an Incentive Program to Reduce Despairities in Private Sector Construction Projects by Increasing Economic Opportunities for Minority-Owned Businesses and Locally-Owned Operated Businesses in Prince George's County. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins. Mr. Tutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CB 86-2025, An Act Concerning the Legacy Wealth Construction Incentive Program. This bill would establish a legacy wealth construction incentive program that would reimburse 50% of building or grading permit fees for projects directing significant expenditures to county-based minority-owned businesses and/or locally-owned and operated businesses, and would involve the Supplier Development and Diversity Division of the Office of Procurement and the Office of Finance would remit payments to the applicants.[1729.01] would remit payments to the applicants. CB eighty-six was presented on September thirtieth this year and referred to GOFP. On page, uh, you will find a fiscal and policy note by Mr. Isaiah Joseph, and it provided that the county may forego up to fifty percent depending upon the, uh, the number. The Office of Law provided a statement in committee and reviewed suggested amendments, and the county executive noted that DEPI is the most appropriate agency. Uh, during the meeting, there was a motion to hold. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you. I'll turn to Councilmember Hawkins.
I recall it was a motion to hold. I did get there late. Oh. CB eighty-six, Legacy Wealth Construction Incentive Program, is legislation that will increase the economic growth by incentivizing private sector projects to utilize and spend with locally owned and operated businesses, both at the general contractor and the subcontractor levels. Dollars spent with locally owned and operated businesses circulate approximately seven times before leaving the county, creating economic growth, local jobs, generational wealth, and increasing our commercial tax base, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there's a question from Councilmember Fisher.
Yes, um, Councilmember Hawkins, I really do, um, love your, um, passion and your work behind this bill. My only question, and maybe it's not to you, Councilmember Hawkins, but to the administration, is your original form of the bill when it had MBE, um, you know, was, was more curated. You know, um, county-based businesses is like all the businesses that have their address in the county, and I'm just wondering a little bit, and I haven't really heard from the exec shop about, so if we're paying fifty percent of their, where's that money coming from? To reimburse them?
The MBE of...
The MBE was stricken in your first draft.
Yes, yes.
Draft two, it was, it was, yes.
Uh, the MBE, based on what the Office of Law and the county exec shared with us, and the county exec representatives can correct me if I'm wrong, that keeping MBE in there would not stand the legal scrutiny, am I correct? I may not have said it the way you can, but you can share your eloquence and respond to.
That's correct, uh, Councilmember Hawkins. Our concern was that it could potentially be a consideration for equal protection challenge under the Constitution. So that was the premise of, uh, the change omitting the, um, MBEs from the bill.
Um, my other questions are to the administration, Mr. Hawkins, not to, not to you. Thank you. So, Ms. Sonia, where is the money to pay, this is for, just so, cause I wasn't, I don't know where I was with this bill, but here I am today. So we're gonna pay half the permitting fees, am I getting this right? Of any, of a county-based business under Article Four? Can somebody help me?
Cause I just have some indulgence to find my notes.
Or maybe while you're finding your notes, Mr. Tutt, can you just, can you just take me back? In, in this bill, it's saying that we're gonna pay half the permitting for a county-based business if, if, if the project's under Article Four? Half? All permitting fees? Yes, Mr. Tutt?
That would be correct, ma'am.
So I'm asking the administration, cause I don't handle the wallets around here, we're in a deficit, and I, I love the bill, so it's not about anything Mr. Hawkins is promoting.
Could I share something?
Where's the money coming to pay for half of that?
Look, locally owned and operated businesses is not the same as county-based businesses. Locally owned and operated businesses mean both. County-based and majority-owned by county residents. County residents are eighty to ninety percent now minority in Prince George's County. And that's how we were getting around the MBE. Is it pay for those, uh, some of those application fees in order to help spur economic development and opportunities for locally owned and operated county businesses?
Um, thank you, Chair. Uh, just so I can make sure I'm following, you're saying that the amended version will be specifically locally owned and operated, not county-based businesses?
Okay. Uh, yeah, like, I'm just, I'm just looking to the administration, y'all just need to know what y'all paying for. Once people say pass, you see what I'm saying, and where the money's coming from. And we're, we're in a hearing, so we can hear, you can afford it, you support the bill, and you can pay for it. That's all I'm saying, but I'm gonna leave it at that.
And I'll also add, because originally I tried to use the locally owned, um, and operated business threshold in my procurement bill, but then I was told by procurement that there's no way to certify locally owned and operated businesses. They don't certify it, they don't track it, and so therefore we couldn't use it, which is why we wrote it, reverted back to county-based MBE. So what I don't want is for the intention of, um, Councilmember Hawkins' bill not to be real if we go back and procurement says, well, actually, we don't use, uh, locally owned and certified, uh, excuse me, locally owned and operated bills, uh, excuse me, businesses, and that is not a certification.
Um, if I may be heard, what I don't recall is the conversation surrounding the briefing of the administration on this bill. I just see my notes where, um, I emailed the committee that we were in favor of this bill. We do have procurement here at this hearing. Um, I don't recall if I received comments from procurement, but they can, um, if they're allowed to speak.
I think procurement, they were shaking their head when I said locally owned and operated. That, that's correct. So, cause if they, if they don't use it, I'd like to just revert back to the councilmembers' original bill of county-based minority businesses.
Also, with the procurement code coming up, locally owned and operated businesses have been a current category for years. When did it change?
Good afternoon. We can, this is Officer Procurement. I'm the Deputy Director of Procurement. I can provide some responses. Um, this is Corey Jefferson, our Legislative Representative of our office. So, we had some legislative comments that we did submit, and I can read those. Um, Vice Chair Oriana is correct. We do not certify locally owned businesses. That's not a certification. Uh, and if I can just gracefully read what some of our comments were. While we did not get into the fiscal part of if this was affordable by the county, what we did write was that the Officer Procurement appreciates the opportunity to provide input. We support the intent to promote economic inclusion and expand opportunities for minority-owned and locally owned businesses, and agree that the proposed Legacy Wealth Construction aligns with the county's broader equity and supplier diversity goals. Uh, but here are some of our concerns. Uh, the Supplier Development and Diversity Division, known as SD Three, located within the Office of Procurement, does not manage or participate in the county's permitting process, as that responsibility lies with DEPI. Uh, signing permitting relating responsibilities to, uh, the Office of Procurement, SD Three, does not align with its current scope or operational structure. Uh, the bill assigns the development of an application and approval process to SD Three, which is unnecessary to carry out the goal of the proposed legislation. Uh, the county's diverse supplier database is publicly accessible and includes up-to-date certification information. Uh, the resource is available to all county agencies and the public on our agency website. Uh, our recommendations to implement the bill are reassigning the permit-related responsibilities to DEPI or establishing the collaborative framework between DEPI and SD Three, particularly for data sharing or strategic planning support. So, uh, for clarification of what the bill does say, uh, Section Ten dash thirty, three sixty-four A refers to the applicant, while Section Ten, three sixty-four A two refers to prime and general contractors. It's unclear whether these terms refer to the same party or different entities. Uh, we recommend clarifying, clarifying this language to ensure consistency, and it's unclear whether the bill applies only to county-issued contracts or also includes residential permit applications. This distinction is critical for determining which agencies are responsible and how the program will be administered. Uh, there is some fiscal and operational impact, of course, with the bill proceeds. The Office of Procurement will require additional staff or software to support such a, a bill and to manage the intake and processing, which is not, uh, the duty of Officer Procurement to, to, uh, process applications. And in closing, we support the intent, uh, that, uh, Council Hawkins has, uh, and we're committed to work collaboratively, but we respectfully request that the committee, um, uh, review some of the things that we have brought forth today. When do we provide?
Councilmember Hawkins?
No, uh.
Yeah, we, we provided that October eighth.
Madam Chair, uh, I would like to hold this and just go back with my team and tighten it up a little bit. And then we can speak with Procurement and everyone that, uh, had opportunity to give input.
Certainly.
Second.
Thank you, Council Hawkins. Thank you.
There's been a motion to hold a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Adam, pardon me, she stepped away. Ms. Plaguey.
Uh, aye.
Mr. Tenover.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye, and I just wanna say, uh, Councilmember Hawkins, you know, I support you. I just want us to pass things that are, that, with the, I think the administration's gotta work with you so we can make sure it's right. We're not just telling the public, we can do stuff when we haven't figured it out. So I want you, and I love you, support the bill.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye on the hold.
Mr. Hawkins?
Madam Clerk, I vote aye on the hold, and explaining to procurement, Section Ten A dash one zero one A, twenty-four point one defines locally owned and operated businesses. I know you're all aware of that. But please ensure you read it before we meet.
We will do that. We do, there's a definition for those businesses. We don't certify those businesses as we do county-based business, county-based small. So we can, we're, we're, you know, open to discuss with you.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriana.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries, nine zero.
Thank you. CB eighty-seven, an act concerning National Board Certified Teacher Incentive Program, the purpose of establishing an incentive program to encourage National Board Certified Teachers to teach at low-performing schools in Prince George's County. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins. I'll turn to Ariane Alber.
Thank you, Chair Burrows, and good afternoon, everyone. Ariane Alber, Director of the Education and Workforce Development Committee. The Education and Workforce Development Committee convened on Ju- October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, to consider CB eighty-seven, twenty twenty-five. The legislation, sponsored by Councilmember Hawkins, was introduced and referred to the EWD Committee on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The bill would establish an incentive match program for National Board Certified Teachers working in low-performing schools in the county. Uh, for reference, the state has a program where National Board Certified Teachers receive an extra ten thousand dollars to their paycheck, and if they work in low-performing schools, they receive an additional seven thousand. Uh, so this bill would double the seven thousand for teachers working in low-performing schools, for a total of twenty-four thousand for National Board Certified Teachers working in low-performing schools. Committee members discussed further narrowing the bill to provide incentives to those National Board Certified Teachers working with special needs students. And on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Education and Workforce Development Committee voted to hold the bill for zero pending further amendments. Uh, there is a proposed draft two C that I can read if, if that works. Uh, the proposed draft further narrows this program to, uh, if you see on page, uh, page one, line four, uh, for those teachers working in the fields of mathematics, special, exceptional needs, and science. This is also added on page, uh, page two, lines eleven and twelve. And on page three, there is an addition of Section Three that reads further, "Be it further enacted that the county council strongly urges and intends to seek that the Prince George's County Public Schools contributes funding to the Prince George's County National Board Certified Teacher Incentive Program Match Fund, as well as urges other state, federal, and private sector partners contribute as well. The county particularly expresses the intent to request one million dollars for the fund from the Maryland General Assembly in its fiscal year twenty twenty-seven state budget." Uh, thank you, and this concludes my overview.
Thank you. Is there a motion for committee recommendation?
Um, support, is it draft two?
Yes.
Draft two?
Second.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Hawkins, second. Okay, there's a, a question?
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hawkins, just for point of clarification for anyone that might be watching, can you please explain where the money would be coming from, uh, to support this, this fund?
Currently, none of the funds are requested from the General Fund, the County General Fund. After speaking with Councilmembers Adam Stafford and Vice Chair Oriana, we will seek funding not just from the school system, but from the General Assembly of a million dollars. Again, this will only be implemented if we can gain the funding, either at the federal, state level or if the school system think is important enough to put in their budget, but it will not come from our county budget.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Hawkins, seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford. Aye. Ms. Plaguey.
Aye.
Mr. Tenover.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher. Mr. Harrison.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriana.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries, ten zero.
CB one oh seven, twenty twenty-five, an act concerning county personnel for the purpose of clarifying the county personnel policy regarding progressive discipline, revised in the grounds for employee dismissal, providing for immediate dismissal for low-performing employees, and generally regarding county personnel law. This has been sponsored by Councilmember Oriana. Mr. Tutt? Do you have a, is it draft two?
I do not have the draft in front of me. Give me one second, Mr. Chair, to open the additions package.
Okay, I believe, Mr. Irving, if, if you have a brief draft two that you wanna go through briefly?
I'll give the, uh, quick overview, Mr. Chair, just to orient the committee. CB one oh seven, twenty twenty-five, is an act concerning county personnel. The purpose is clarifying the county's personnel policy regarding progressive discipline, revising the grounds for employee dismissal, providing for immediate dismissal for, for low performing, for performing employees, and generally regarding county personnel law. And I'll turn to, uh, Mr. Irving for a review of draft two. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so there are four things that are being changed in this draft, and so I'll go through those changes. Um, I'll let you know what the changes are and then show you where they are. So, the first change that's being made is removing the clarifying language within the progressive discipline policy. Uh, number two is removing changes in the original draft, uh, under conduct-related discipline. Uh, the third thing is adding grounds for performance-related discipline. And the last thing is, um, adding a specific language, uh, around legislative branch employee dismissal. So, the first thing that's here, you'll see on page two, lines seventeen through twenty-one. Originally, the first draft included language that, um, language that, that said that progressive discipline, um, is not always appropriate uh, when there's a serious, uh, serious violation or misconduct. That, that language has been removed after discussion with, uh, the Office of Law to, to make sure that it's not, this section is not, uh, have any contradictions within it. The second change is on, um, the second page is on, the second change is on page three under the, uh, under the conduct-related disciplinary action. The original draft, uh, included, added, wherein employees' actions called into question, I'm sorry, when employees' actions called into question their competence, that that would be a, a basis for dismissal under conduct-related disciplinary actions. That has been removed, but that has been added to the performance-related disciplinary actions. So you'll see on page three, lines twenty-three through twenty-six. For the grounds for disciplinary action under performance, uh, for performance, we've added number four, which reads, "Where the employee commits an act or a series of acts which call into serious question whether the employee is incompetent or inefficient in the continued performance of the employee's assigned duties and responsibilities." And so what this addition does is makes this ground a serious, an act or serious act which calls into question an employee's competence, makes that a ground for disciplinary action um, under the performance-related section.
Excuse me, uh, can we, uh, wrap this speed it up?
Oh, yes. And, uh, the last, the last change, um, in discussion with the Office of Law, uh, they noted that Section three fourteen of the Charter allows the county council to, to develop, uh, to implement its own personnel procedures. And so you'll see in the, um, in the title on page one, line four, but most specifically on, uh, page two, lines three through five, it makes clear that the county council can implement personnel procedures which govern the employees of the legislative branch. And so that covers all of the changes from draft one.
Thank you. I'd like to move favorable draft two.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Oriana, seconded by Councilmember Hawkins. Madam Clerk, please... Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blaget?
Aye.
Mr. Denova?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher? Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
I abstain.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oriana?
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries, nine, zero, one.
Thank you. This concludes committee of the whole. We're going to switch the system right now and move into county council. So let's try to switch the system quickly. Is there a motion to adjourn, committee of the whole? All those in favor say aye. We adjourn. Okay.
I'm sorry, who made that? I'll take Watson.